For those who are joining us, please use your clickers to note if you are in attendance. We're just going to scroll through to make sure all the clickers worked. If you're coming in and you didn't click it, don't tell me your clicker didn't work. Let's roll. Everyone who used your clicker, if it works. If it does not work, we need to notify the town clerk and the town clerk's staff. The town, the clerk of the meeting is not, is at the table in the back. If your clicker is not working. She's waving her hand. Please go see her and she will help you with your clicker. As many of you know, I was extremely hesitant to return to the podium after Fall Town Meeting. I was told by a wise person in this room that I should take time away, a mini-vacation of sorts, before making my decision official. In that time away, I thought about the lessons I have learned from serving this body and being in your seats as a town meeting member, proponent of an article, or an opponent of an article. Led me to deeply think about what truly makes democracy work in Winchester. I was always proud to say that town meeting can easily be debated, that is the purest forms of our democracy left. Why did it feel like a forced statement the last time I said it? There's no doubt that we are impacted by the national and state influences in politics. However, each of us serve on a very micro level that we have easier opportunities to take on the issues before us in collaborative and transparent ways, to also include all voices, even the ones we do not agree with. Then there was the dreaded shutdown of our country due to the unknown impacts of a new virus, the impacts COVID had on our local government. It ripped people apart from each other that were once able to communicate and see each other's perspectives. There is no doubt that COVID impacted the collaborative nature of our local government. Technology was also brought into meetings as a result that added another layer of hurdles of communication from the mute button, turning off cameras, accessing documents that were at the table, and removing other forms of communication beyond just the sound of our voices. Then there is unfortunately, human pride. E Pluribus Unum, One From Many. That is the motto on the Great Seal of the United States. It has 13 letters, making it symbolic of the 13 original colonies and hence, the 13 stripes of the American flag. The saying also appears over the Tribune in the United States Senate Chamber and on the flags of the President, Senate House, and Supreme Court. Government and our town meeting is not a game where someone wins, and it absolutely is not a zero-sum game. When one before us has a perspective that this is about a win, we all lose. The votes this body makes does not define a scorecard for one. It defines what is best for many, our entire community. E Pluribus Unum, we make one decision from the voices of many. Town meeting's environment is not conducive to have substantial, open, and collaborative dialogue among different perspectives. It cannot be the solution to shortcomings of communication between boards, committees, staff, and the public. For the success of town meeting to have accurate reflections of democracy, the communication breakdown that occurred, whether it's due to national politics, COVID, or pride, needs to be repaired. I am hopeful after the past week, as we sit in the season of spring, that our community is having a rebirth from the winter we were in. In my work as the moderator on behalf of this body, I'm witnessing that communications are being reestablished. Conversations at board and committee tables have been opening to allow more access for the public to be part of the process, and pride has started to be set aside, which has commenced releasing the frost. However, for it not to return, especially as we as a community move towards a national November election, there is still a lot of work to be done by many volunteers who sit in this room and those who will be brave to throw their hat into the process in the future. Thank you to all the members of our government who sit before me, who are dedicated to communication and collaboration and are setting aside pride. Your work is showing. As I open the Spring 2024 Town Meeting, let us remember that we come together in civil assembly in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions that can have a profound influence on our community. Let us remember that our presence in this room every night includes and supports modeling diverse voices, respecting diverse opinions, and coming to the best solution of our town and community using the democratic process. The next generation of civic leaders are among us. Caring for each other, even those we disagree with in this community, is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. Town meeting requiring 100 members for a quorum and having... 114 in attendance. It is your, in, your moderator sees there are sufficient number of members present to permit us to open the 2024 Spring Town Meeting, and it is so declared. To our town meeting members, welcome back. It is great to see all of you again. Welcome also to town staff, members of boards and committees, town consultants, and article presenters, as well as residents and other visitors who have joined us tonight. Welcome one and all. I am Heather Von Mering, your Town Meeting Moderator. Going forward in this meeting, I ask to refer to as Madam Moderator. We are joined by town meeting staff, the town clerk and clerk of the meeting, Mary Ellen Marshall. Also with us in attendance in the auditorium and cafeteria is staff from the town clerk's office. Sitting with the select board is our town manager, Beth Rudolph. Beside me is also our town consul, Jay Tellerman, and Vmeed Tellerman Acosta. Matthew Griffin is in the front in the red shirt right there. He's in charge of our IT. And along, we also have staff from facilities, the facilities coordinator for the Department of Public Works, Drew Chase behind me from Options Technology, running our electronic voting, and David Gothier, of course, who is up above, and his talented crew from Windcam, who makes all the technology of this roomwork, along with make our meeting accessible to people from home. Since we last met, there are a handful of new hires, supervisors, and above positions. Marlena Yosaguyas has been hired as a Director of Special Education. Ms. Yosaguyas comes in Winchester with over 20 years of experience in special education, including positions at the Landmark School, Felix Academy in Andover, as a current Senior Special Education Director of the Lawrence Public Schools. Aiden White has been hired as a Special Education Program Supervisor. Ms. White comes to Winchester with over 10 years of experience in special education. She currently serves as a principal at the Walker School in Eda, Massachusetts, which is a private special education school that serves students in grades K through 8 with, who present with complex social and emotional challenges. Andrew Marin has been hired as the Director of Finance and Operations in the schools. Mr. Marin served as a Winchester Public Schools Operations Manager for two years prior to being appointed as the Director of Finance and Operations in July of 2023. Before joining the Winchester Public Schools, Mr. Marin spent 15-plus years in various private and public management roles, including possessions, positions with the Braintree Public Schools in the town of Braintree. Mr. Jim Gibbons, Water and Sewer Operations Manager, and Mr. Paul Gange, Supervisor of the Wadham System Distribution, have retired. Each having served our community for over 40 years, their service and advocacy for our community is deeply appreciated and recognized. Mr. Daniel Stone King has been hired as a Department Head for the Water and Sewer Division. He served Arlington and Medford for many years in their DPW. Mr. Peter Decopulus has been employed with Winchester for approximately five years and has been promoted multiple times since those five years commencement and is now the Supervisor of the Water System Distribution. Thank you to all of our newest members of the town of Winchester's staff. Welcome. We wish Mr. Gibbons and Mr. Gange all the best in their retirement. We will now move to the oath of the office. It is your moderator's honor to provide the oath of office to all the newly-elected town meeting members and also the really-elected town meeting members. Please rise and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will faithfully and partially discharge and perform all the duties of the office of the town meeting member to which you have been elected in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the charter and bylaws of the town of Winchester? Thank you. You may please be seated. We will continue our meeting tradition with the Pledge of Allegiance. As we look to the flag, let us remember the 13 stripes representing the 13 original colonies and the 13 letters of E Pluribus Unum, One Of Many. Tonight's flag ceremony will be completed by the Scouts of America, our very own Troop 507 of Winchester. For those members who would like the option to join me, please rise.
Audience, attention. Scouts salute. Color guard advance. Color guard, post colors. Audience, put the hand up your heart and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Audience, may you be seated? Scouts, up. Color guard, descend.
Thank you, Troop 507. Next, the clerk of the meeting, provide a handout when you checked in that highlights some important procedures and practices and place employed in service to you, the meeting, to provide a fair and orderly process to facilitate your important decision-making. Please make sure you pick that up if you would like a copy of it. It is a parliamentary procedure that all communication is to be directed to the moderator. It is recognized that it is a formal process and can feel unnatural at times, but it maintains a safe and welcoming environment for all. Your moderator will do their best to try to outline what is going on as we move through the meeting for our newest and hopefully as well, supporting our longtime members. Hold on tight. It can always be an adventure here. Finally, before I move on, the preliminary motions. It is with great sadness to form the body that John J. Dooley Jr. has passed since we last met. Mr. Dooley was a longtime Winchester resident and retired Winchester firefighter. He was also a graduate Winchester High School. After graduation, John enlisted in the US Army and he served his country proudly. In 1967, he started his career as auxiliary firefighter and then transitioned to full-time firefighter with the Winchester Fire Department. He was well-known for the support he provided using his master electrician skills and supporting the installation of communication cables and equipment for the town. He is described as a man who never turned down a challenge in his work for the town of Winchester. Your moderator kindly asks for a moment of silence for Mr. Dooley and all those in our community, local and throughout the world, who we have lost in their honor and in their memory. Thank you. Moving to page one of your Town of Winchester 2024 Spring Annual Town Meeting booklet. The big green one. It looks like this. It is moved and seconded to adopt the resolution relating to preliminary motions as printed in your motion book on page one. This does not include the consent agenda. Consent agenda will be taken up on Thursday, I mean, a week from today, on Monday, as there are some financial items in there from fiscal year 2025. Please note number six. We are aiming to complete this work before, in four, potentially five evenings, pending the needs of this meeting. I believe that town meeting is ready for the question. A majority vote of the members as president is required. The question on the approval of the preliminary motion shown on your screen. Not yet. We'll put it on as shown on page one of your green book. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. The yays have it and the motion passes. Thank you to town meeting for your preliminary motion. The moderator would like to appoint Philip Frater Rowley as the deputy moderator and will be sitting next to me throughout the meeting and will be moving around to support the meeting and staff and myself. Moving on, we are going to move on to Article One. Article One is on page two of your Green Motion booklet for the Spring Annual Town Meeting. Article One is the reports of all the boards and committees that are not have standalone articles for the reports. We will be commencing with the elected bodies and moving then to the appointed. The proponent is Select Board of this article. They will kick us off with a 10-minute, no more, presentation. Thereafter, we will be hearing from the rest of the boards and committees. On behalf of the Select Board is Mrs. Michelle Pryor, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening, everybody, and welcome to Spring Town Meeting. We get to go first. I promised Heather I would not use my full 10 minutes, so let me know how I did. First off, we wanted to welcome Bill McGonigal, our newest member, who won election in March, and congratulations to everybody else who won seats on Planning Board, School Committee, and other in-town meeting, and all of you. And Rich, I don't know if I see him, but if we do, we should keep an eye on him. But thank you, Rich, for all of his time for serving as chair for two years. I think I understood that the day after we reorganized, how many emails you get as the chair, so I have a completely different appreciation for what that is. We wanted to start off tonight with asking for your support on Select Board articles. We sponsored a bunch this year, so quick highlights. Article eight, we're going to ask for your support for an easement from the MBTA to complete the work on two culverts behind the Morocco School. Article nine is to accept the Community Preservation Act. Article 10, to amend our bylaws to create a Winchester Committee for Community Preservation. Whoops, I think I went a little quickly. Article 20, our favorite water and sewer rates. They are being amended again this year. You'll get some more background as to why. Article 26, we co-sponsored with Capital Planning, asking for some money to complete traffic improvements in the Lynch neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods. Then Article 33, transfer some of money for the Strategic Maintenance Fund. We're going to talk a minute about capital, so Article 33 is another movement in that direction to have more funds to actually maintain our assets. And then Article 34 was our last co-sponsored article with the EFPBC for the replacement in reconfiguration of the high school gym floor, replacing the athletic equipment and the bleachers. So those are our articles in this Spring Town Meeting, and we ask for your support, and you'll hear more as we take them all up. So what's happened since we were here last? The Lake Street Bridge opened just before Thanksgiving. We all remember that. We had a survey, the Talk of the Town. We had an online survey. We had focus groups, December and January. Over 1,000 of our neighbors participated, so thank you for letting us know how you like to consume information from us, what kinds of social media and things and newspapers that you read. And we had a groundbreaking for the Lynch School on March 22nd. If you've driven by Lynch lately, you'll see the structure actually starting to take place. And I wanted to highlight not elected officials, no knock on us, but this is custodian and Lynch leadership. These are the people who are going to get to work in that new building, and it's going to be great. So that was some of the highlights that we had. I think I put some more of them in our, in my letter to you all, but a lot has happened since November. And what is the Select Board doing? Well, we're doing what we usually do. We're meeting a lot, but we have some priorities. We're going to talk in a minute about evaluation, evaluation of our capital needs and strategy development. We're going to continue to keep residents informed about key town initiatives. And we want to work on improving coordination with other boards and committees. Madam Moderator alluded to this in her opening statement. I think it's, we all need to do a little bit better talking with each other. This is my favorite cartoons that I use in my job sometimes. Improving coordination and communication is a shared responsibility, and we are committed to working with staff and our fellow volunteers to address the pressing issues facing the town. So we talked about, a bit about capital. So ARPA is stimulus money. The town was awarded a few million dollars. The funding expires at the end of this calendar year. We have to obligate all of the funds, but wanted to point out, and the Select Board has been distributing the ARPA funds over the course of the last couple of years. Wanted to highlight that we've made some investments in capital-related initiatives over the last, this is just a subset. We actually paid for an upgrade to our VFA software. We created schematic, completed schematic design for the town hall and library windows. We're looking at trying to update the Mystic School heating system, the Niamisium, which we'll talk about in a minute. The funding commitments from the Select Board to these capital projects total $1.8 million this fiscal year alone, and the projects behind me on the page are almost $2 million in investment in our capital assets. With Article 13 in this Spring Town Meeting, we're going to ask for your, your support to fund what we need to complete the renovations of the high school gym. ARPA began with engineering and replacement. ARPA is also meeting about half of the cost of that high school gym reconfiguration. So we've been investing all along the way, but we're still not fully there. So what do we need? Well, here's a little album of woe, as I called it to Beth on Friday. We're going to go sort of inside looking out, outside looking in. Those are our library windows. These are leaking spots in the library ceilings from a leaky roof. And this is the famous Mystic School portable heating system. Tubes that run through the windows, that sit on desks, that try to keep temperatures from being, you know, somewhere above 60 degrees in the winter. We've put ARPA money toward all of these projects. We need to find ways to fund it, but our needs are great. And there is, let me tell you, there's dozens more of these photos should you wish to look at them. I just tried to pick the ones that I could fit on the page. So it's no doubt we have a lot of capital needs. We have assets to maintain. We have assets to replace. We have things to fix. So Select Board, we understand the need to move from crisis management to strategic planning. In the Spring Town Meeting warrant book, we have Articles 27 and 37, both of which, different sponsors, but both of which get at the need for improved collaboration among boards and committees. And to that end, we, as a Select Board, intend to reconvene stakeholders who were engaged with us in November and December, looking at capital projects and capital priorities. And we want to have a group with capital planning, with the Finance Committee, with DPW. We want to be looking at, whoops, I skipped a slide, sorry. We want to make sure our maintenance director is part of telling us what needs to be done, what are, what are the conditions of our assets? We want to look at capital needs and purposes. We don't just build new things. We repair existing things. We extend the useful life of things. And VFA, you heard that reference a few slides ago, that software that we used ARPA money to upgrade, it's, it maintains facility-conditioned data, and it has some forecasting tools that allow professionals to model multi-year capital plans. It tells us the useful life. It gives us a replacement schedule. We paid to upgrade it. We really need to use what it tells us. And we want to make sure that we're maintaining the assets that we need. Article 33, that Strategic Maintenance Fund, is another investment toward maintaining the life of the assets that we have. I think Finance Committee has calculated the value of the assets in town is a half a billion dollars. It's a lot, and it's a lot, when we don't maintain it, we lose functionality. We have, there are downstream impacts. We destroy, you know, collections and murals in the library, so we have to get ahead of this somehow. So Select Board is going to be convening some stakeholders and then the outputs. We're going to look at the sources of capital funding, existing sources, opportunities to raise additional revenue, whether that's, you know, through ballot questions, through different appropriations of funds. The, we want to look at funding levels. So the Select Board sets policy, and the Select Board decides if and when any capital-related ballot question gets on the ballot. The Capital Planning Committee makes recommendations to the town manager's capital plan. So out of this group, we expect to have priorities to inform the town manager's capital plan, as well as communication to town meeting and other residents as to what any future ballot questions might look like. The CPA article, going back to Article Nine, it's a potential source of revenue to maintain our historic buildings and improve our recreational spaces. We've already invested ARPA funds in some of these projects, like the library and the Mystic School. If voters pass the CPA in the fall, some of these projects could move forward in the summer of 2025 or during fiscal year 2026. It doesn't solve our capital funding challenge, but it's a step in the right direction, and we have many historic buildings and recreational spaces that could really use some attention and some upgrades. So in closing, I want to leave you with, I think I did better than 10 minutes. Madam Moderator, you let me know. Please, we support, we would appreciate your support for articles that have been brought before you after months of planning and consideration by the Select Board and others. We want to make sure that you and your neighbors haven't already done so. Bookmark Winchester.us. You can check out the calendar of hearings and meetings in any given week. You can check out the news tab. And you can sign up for alerts to actually be sent to you via text and email. It's at the bottom of the homepage. You click Sign Up for Alerts, get notifications, and it brings you to this little page that's Notify Me, and you, I want to have the letters from the town planner, I want to have updates from the town manager's office. You can pick and choose what you get. If you want to volunteer for open seats on boards and committees, you can also find that at Winchester.us. Under Jobs, scroll to the bottom, Volunteer Opportunities. Maybe someone lost a bet to you. Maybe your spouse needs a hobby, but we always have open seats. You can find it on Winchester.us. And lastly, thank you for your service to the town of Winchester, and welcome to Night One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pryor. You did it in nine minutes and 50 seconds. Congratulations. Next up, we will hear from the town manager, Beth Rudolph.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and Town Meeting Members. I'm pleased to come before you this evening to provide an update on various town initiatives and an overview of the town's financial outlook. Since we met last fall, town has successfully opened bids for the Lynch Elementary School reconstruction project. The school is expected to be completed in September of 2025. Additionally, earlier this year, the Planning Board approved the proposed affordable housing development on the town-owned waterfield lot, and the developer is now moving forward with their applications for state funding. As mentioned by Madam Moderator, the town has had several retirements and new hires recently, including Daniel Stone King, our new Water and Sewer Operations Manager. We've also recently filled the Building and Zoning Application Coordinator position that was created as part of the FY24 budget. For FY25, the town manager's budget submitted to the Finance Committee included funding for three new municipal positions, an Assistant Town Planner, a Deputy Fire Chief, and a Building Maintenance Coordinator for the Lynch Elementary School. As manager, I feel strongly that these positions are necessary to maintain a sustainable workforce that provides for succession planning and redundancy, and in the case of a Lynch School position, considers the future needs of our building infrastructure. In September of 2023, the town's free cash balance was certified at just over $20 million. This amount was reduced by appropriations at Fall Town Meeting, leaving a current balance of approximately $19.3 million. This spring, just over $650,000 is being requested for use in a variety of projects and to supplement the FY24 operating budgets. If all the articles pass and no additional free cash is used to balance the FY25 budget, the remaining total unappropriated free cash balance will be approximately $18.66 million. The town of Winchester has historically made a AAA rating with Moody's Investor Services, and we are currently one of 14 communities in Massachusetts with this rating. In March, Moody's reaffirmed the town's AAA rating, which allows the town to borrow funds at the most favorable interest rates. In their credit rating, Moody's noted that although the town has a stable financial position, our reserve levels are below average for highly, for the highest rating category. In the next few slides, the next few slides are similar to the ones that I've shown in the past few Spring Town Meetings and help to provide a historical context for our financial positions. In this first slide, provides a history of the departmental turnbacks at the end of each fiscal year since 2012. FY20, 21, and 22 had higher-than-average turnbacks during the height of the pandemic. Last year's turnback included approximately $1.2 million from the health insurance budget due to changes in our insurance providers that resulted... due to changes in our insurance providers that resulted in decreased plan costs. This next slide provides a summary of the historical free cash usage for the operating budget and other uses since fiscal year 2010. Note that the free cash usage for the operating budget in each fiscal year represents the amount needed to balance the budget in the subsequent year. So for example, in 2010, just over $2.2 million was used to balance the budget in FY11. On average, since FY2010, and not including the three override years, the town has used approximately $1.2 million in free cash annually to balance the budget, which tracks closely with the historic average annual turnbacks. In 2010, the Select Board adopted an operating reserve policy that targeted reserves to be between 6% and 10% of the estimated general fund revenues. This slide shows the historical operating revenue percentages from FY15 through FY23. Reserves have steadily grown since FY20 due to the factors covered in previous slides. There's been significant discussion over the past several months related to the town's capital needs and development of a long-term funding strategy. The capital and building stabilization funds were created by special legislation approved by Town Meeting in Spring 2002, and were funded by general overrides in 2002, 2019, and '23. Subsequent to their creation, Town Meeting authorized two committees to develop guidelines for administration of the funds. Earlier this spring, Town Council reviewed prior use and appropriations out of the two stabilization funds and confirmed that they meet legal requirements. A copy of this legal opinion was provided to Town Meeting members. At their current funding levels, the two stabilization funds are no longer able to support the town's capital needs. As noted by the Select Board Chair, the Board will be convening a group of stakeholders to evaluate capital priorities and funding strategies in the coming months. An annual budget represents a statement of our community's values, priorities, and objectives for the coming year. Growth must be managed strategically to maintain balance between operating and capital needs and projected revenues. As part of the Town Manager's FY25 budget process, staff developed a three-year financial projection for FY25, excuse me, FY26 through FY28. The model suggests that the structural deficit-
Excuse me. How much more time do you need?
I need 30 seconds, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
It's quicker to let her go.
Suggests that the structural deficit between revenues and expenses will continue to grow, resulting in increased use of reserves to balance the budget. It's important to note, however, that the budget model is a planning tool and that projections are not foregone conclusions. The model should be used to help guide future decisions, and we should expect that those decisions will change the trajectory of the projections. Additionally, our financial plan must take into account the long-term strategy to adjust, to address not just operation needs, but also capital needs, as we consider the use of reserve funds and future overrides. And finally, just a plug for the Housing Production Plan update that we have going on. If you're missing a community environment after Town Meeting ends on May 15th, we have a Zoom meeting at 7:00 PM, and I hope everybody can join that. Thank you.
Thank you to the Town Manager. Next up is the School Committee Chair, Mr. Tom Hopcroft. Mr. Hopcroft has informed me he needs 10 minutes, as they are not proponent of the article, they are allotted only five from our bylaw unless there's a vote of this body. May I have a motion? I ask the body to consider extending the time for the School Committee's report to be 10 minutes. All those in favor? All those opposed? Mr. Hopcroft, you have 10 minutes.
All right. Good evening, Madam Moderator, Boards, Committees, and members of Town Meeting. I'm Tom Hopcroft, School Committee Chair, and I rise to give the School Committee report. Do I got to press the button? Hang on. All right. I'd like to acknowledge members of the School Committee, Vice Chair Michelle Bergstrom, Recording Secretary Karen Bolinese, Member Chris Nixon, Member Tim Matthews, who we welcomed to the School Committee, and our student representatives Michaela Jens and Mahir Shahrawad. I'd also like to acknowledge District Leadership, Superintendent Frank Hackett, Assistant Superintendent Jen Ellenema, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Elementary Education Lori Kirby, and Director of Finance and Operations Andrew Maron. These are just a few of the eight, nearly 800 committed employees and countless parent volunteers responsible for supporting the learning and development needs of over 4,200 students in Winchester each year, and I thank you all for your leadership and dedication to our community. The Winchester Public School System is a large, people-centric organization aligned around a common vision, priorities, and goals. Our mission is centered around supporting our students' academic achievement, social-emotional development, and a lifelong love of learning. You can read more about our strategic planning framework and goals at winchesterps.org/goals. Working collaboratively with District Leadership, the School Committee developed six priority areas or lenses that guide our work. We place student success and well-being at the core and apply these lenses as we learn, evaluate, and innovate around key policies, practices, and budgeting. By way of example, sustainability was a key theme in the design of the new Lynch Elementary School, from being an all-electric, net-zero building to having an onsite kitchen and dishwasher. This facility will exemplify sustainability in its design and serve as an educational model for our students. Family support is another example. A lesson learned coming out of the tumultuous COVID years, where the district was literally reinventing education in flight, is that we need to get better and focus on how we can more meaningfully engage with our families in our work with students. The Literacy Research Study and Standards-Based Grading Pilot are a couple examples of our sincere efforts to reset as a district and build a stronger, more collaborative relationship with families. Keeping up with my slides. The School Committee and District Leadership are guided by a strategic framework that is dynamic and responsive to student, staff, and community needs. This three-pronged strategic framework includes these goal areas and underlying strategic priorities. Teaching and learning is at the foundation, community culture and well-being to enable students to access the teaching and learning, and operations and system support to ensure that everything is running smoothly. For each prong of the framework, District Leadership and building-based educators develop detailed frameworks outlining that prong's goal area and commitment, strategic priorities and objectives, and key performance indicators. I'm not going to go through all of them, but this is an example. I'd like to take a moment to put the Winchester Public School District into the context of other high-performing districts in our area. These are a set of peer districts that were agreed upon some years ago by the School Committee, Select Board, and Finance Committee for benchmarking Winchester on a variety of measures. Here we see our per-people spending, a measure of the amount we choose to invest as a community in our schools on an individualized, per-student basis for comparison. As you can see, at $17,995 per student, we're in the bottom quarter of our peer districts, and while not shown in this chart, we're in the bottom third statewide. In other words, 67% of all school districts in the Commonwealth invest more per pupil than Winchester. When we look at tax rates, we find that our peer districts are in a tight band between 10% and 16%. Again, even within this tight band, Winchester's residential tax rate is in the bottom third of those of our peer districts. So if low taxes are your sole priority, one could perhaps do better than Winchester. But for a community with both a high-performing school district and low tax rate, Winchester is among the best in the state. What if we applied our comparison district's per-pupil expenditure rate to Winchester's enrollment? This chart illustrates the different investment levels if we apply our peer district's per-pupil investment rate to our enrollment numbers here in Winchester. If we just look at the average of our per-pupil spending among our peer districts of $21,500 multiplied by our enrollment here in Winchester, we'd be investing an additional $15.6 million educating our students each year. So let's talk about enrollment. As you can see, Winchester's enrollment growth, shown here in blue, is generally above that of the Commonwealth as a whole. Like just about every district across Massachusetts and the country, Winchester saw a dramatic decrease in enrollment as a result of COVID, and has bounced back to a positive growth trajectory above the state average. This reflects what we know about Winchester. We have an amazing community, close proximity to Boston, with exceptional school system. People want to live and raise their families here. This slide shows enrollment declines in K5 over the past few years and the district's corresponding reductions in class sections. In a measure of fiscal prudence, the district proactively reduced 10 sections in three years between FY22 and FY25 budgets, representing close to $1 million in savings that is already factored into the budget that we presented to the Town Manager. This savings is easy to overlook as contractual agreements, out-of-district tuition, and other legally obligated expenses have increased at a faster rate year-over-year, obscuring these savings. To underscore this point, our budget would have been close to $1 million higher without these fiscally prudent enrollment-driven adjustments. Also, prior to the 2018 operational override, we saw class sizes exceeding their targets, and while balancing class sizes across neighborhood schools can be challenging, we've been able to manage class size growth within our stated policies. We budgeted 4,289 students in our FY25 budget, which includes the River Street developments. We recognize that we will see additional students in the coming years from Cambridge Street and future developments that will impact enrollment over the next five to 10-plus years. Recent COVID enrollment volatility, plus the New Morocco project on the horizon, underscore the need for a deeper enrollment study, which is the subject of an EFPBC master facilities plan in Article 19. In the private sector, we often think in terms of zero-based budgeting, where you plan expenses based on projected sales revenue. When it comes to public schools, however, we use enrollment-based budgeting, where we start with the enrollment and the statutory requirement to meet the needs of the students who come through our doors. So it's our students that drive staffing and service level needs, which in turn drives our budget expense line. We then work to apply state, federal, and local funding to balance the budget. Let's take a look at a summary slide with our FY25 School Committee-approved budget numbers. Last year, Town Meeting approved $63 million FY24 budget, representing only a 3.76% increase over the prior year. This was up from our $60.9 million FY23 budget the year prior, which had a 4.73% increase over the year before that. The School Committee is required to vote and submit our budget to the Town Manager by the end of January. As you can imagine, a lot can happen between January and Town Meeting, and in the months since we voted our budget, we've had a decline in our FY25 out-of-district placements, representing an expense reduction of about $550,000. The School Committee took the fiscally prudent step last week of voting to reduce our budget request by this amount, and will be asking for a motion to amend under Motion 29 of Article 28 when we get to voting on the Yellow Sheet. In closing, I'll just spotlight a few milestones worth highlighting. We had our official groundbreaking at the all-electric, net-zero Lynch Elementary School on March 22nd, 2024. And with the better-than-expected weather this spring, we're seeing great progress as the new school rises up out of the ground. While Lynch is underway, the School Committee has its eyes set on the last of our schools in need of replacement, the Morocco Elementary School. We voted unanimously at our January 9th meeting, our intent to submit jointly with the Select Board a new statement of interest to the Mass State Building Authority's Core Replacement Program in their next round, which opens in January 2025, to partner with us on the New Morocco. This submission will require detailed enrollment projections, not just for the short term before Morocco is built, but for what we expect the projected enrollment to be upon completion. This 10-plus-year, more rigorous enrollment study is part of the EFPBC's Facility Master Plan Warrant article, and is essential to a data-informed decision-making and keeping our 2028 to 2030 timeline for the New Morocco. As I draw to a close, I want to sincerely thank Town Meeting for your commitment to supporting our students and educators. Educational excellence is a hallmark of our community and the result of hours and resources that you have committed. Finally, while we don't talk a lot about accolades or emphasize our achievements, as students already indicate that too much pressure to excel is a major stressor for them, I want you to know that Winchester continues to outperform and lead on many rankings, which, combined with our low-per-pupil investment, makes Winchester Public Education one of the best public education values you can find in the Commonwealth. With that, I thank you.
Thank you very much to the School Committee. Nine minutes, 57 seconds. Next up is the Board of Health Chair, Dr. Greg Sawicki.
Evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for allowing me to give a brief update. I promised under five minutes, maybe four. I can do that note in four minutes, 52 seconds. So on behalf of the Board of Health, I'd like to give an update about what's been going on at the Board of Health, but also in the Health Department. Thanks to appropriations, last year from Town Meeting, we were able to hire a new environmental health inspector, who has come on full-time with the Health Department, and that's actually helped some efficiency in terms of getting things organized around many of the operations of the Health Department now coming out of pandemic times. We're not in a public health emergency anymore, so we can focus on really protecting the public health of the town in the way that a Health Department is structured to do so. So there's housing inspections, inspections of situations where there's hoarding, and I think for many of us, understanding the inspections of food establishments, and I think it is exciting that there's actually several new restaurants and food establishments opening in the town of Winchester over the next couple of months, which has actually kept our team quite busy. Last year, you heard on some rodent control issues, that's continued as well, and so we are continuing to promote alternative control tactics and working with the town and phasing out some of the escars that have been used and have been a subject of some news reports over the past year. A couple other new things about the way that we're handling hazardous waste. As of this year, the town of Winchester has actually joined a regional cooperative in terms of hazardous waste collection plans, so no longer is hazardous waste collection happening at our transit station. It's actually now it's part of a collective that's actually housed in Lexington, so there's information. If you want to scan this QR code, it's also on the website. And so these are regional events, anyone who has a Winchester residence can participate. You have to sign up beforehand, but it's once a month, so the opportunities to get rid of hazardous waste have increased, and it's actually not that far of a drive if you map it out, particularly from some parts of town. Our public health nurse is as busy as ever, working on vaccine clinics both in town for COVID and flu vaccines, as well as with the school system, where we've held flu clinics at all the schools. And we're also working with the School Department on other childhood vaccinations and immunizations, including catch-up for those who maybe have not gotten some of their immunizations, and so this has been an active component with our public health nurse, and we've had really strong community participation with these vaccine clinics, both in the schools as well as in organizations such as the JENKS. And I think we have to thank the members of the community who come out to really, to promote this important public health initiative. We also have medication and sharps disposals, this just happened last weekend, where there were safe disposal events, where there's two events in the spring and fall, but 24/7 there are kiosks, which are in the police station lobby for any safe disposals, and as you can see, it's almost 1,000 pounds of medications or sharps that are collected. And so again, getting them out of normal trash is very important in terms of a public health protection. And it goes without saying that we have the Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community, ably led by Dot Butler, with funding support from the Cummings Foundation, and this is an organization that's been around for many years with a focus on reducing risky behaviors and fostering healthy life choices for both our youth, but also our greater community at large. And the focus has really turned over the last couple of years to mental health promotion, intervention, and response, in response to numerous other things that have been happening in society. There are monthly meetings, speaker serieses, and trainings for the community. So if you haven't been to a Coalition event, they're widely advertised and broadcast on social media, but also on the, on our website, and so you're absolutely welcome to come to any of these events. From a financial perspective, the only thing I'll mention is that you may be aware that the state awarded towns money from opioid settlements that really had to do with legal cases that actually led to funds being dispersed from manufacturers of opioids that led to addiction and subsequent problems. And so the Health Department has become the steward for many of these funds, and we've used some of them, but we also are open ears and open eyes to think about where we can help the community in terms of dealing with the opioid crisis. This includes things like Narcan aid boxes in public buildings, trainings for town staff around Narcan administration, mental health classes, mental health resource awareness that we're working towards, and we're welcome to get suggestions from anyone here or in the community about how best you might think about using some of these funds moving forward into the future. So our ongoing areas of focus really are around public health outreach and education, both for preventable illness, but environmental challenges as well. We're going to be working on a bunch of public health regulations over the next year, the most important of which is going to be revision to our tobacco sales regulation. We held a public hearing last week, and we'll be holding further deliberations later this month. For any information about that, feel free to contact any of us. And then obviously, we'll be working with towns, boards, committees, and departments to think about programming and resources, including a focus on mental health and substance use. We're always open for suggestions, and we're always open for comments, and again, thank you to the staff at the Health Department that really does the vast majority of work that I included here. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the Board of Health for all your work in keeping our community safe. Next up is the Board of Library Trustee. On their behalf is their Chair, Mrs. Angela Murdo.
Thank you, Madam Moderator and Town Meeting members. I'm Angela Murdo, the current Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here to report on the status of the library. The trustees have always felt fortunate that the library is consistently well-supported by the town. Thank you for our current budget, which maintains our current level of operations and service, which therefore maintains the library's accreditation within the state of Massachusetts. The library continues to be a community center of resources, hosting meetings, lectures, craft, and cooking groups among other children and adult programs. Last year, the library welcomed more than 168,000 visitors, who checked out more than 593,000 items and 35,000 eBooks. There was a significant increase in audiobook circulation, with more than 23,000 checkouts, demonstrating that Winchester and its residents are prolific users of our local library in many ways. Of course, there are items to read and to listen to, and the Winchester Public Library also offers a library of things. Patrons have the opportunity to borrow a Meeting Owl Pro photo printer kit, a ringlight and tripod, along with Chromebooks, MacBooks, chargers, even hotspots and Rokus. How about borrowing the kilowatt meter, light therapy lamp, trekking poles, or the karaoke machine? Please take a few minutes to look at the library website or stop by to see what we have available in our library of things. Before you post it in search of on the residence page or the free site, double-check to see if the library might have what you need to borrow. Not only is the library for reading and research resources, it is also a place to find things that make our lives, dare I say, easier, or at least more interesting. The Friends of the Library support multiple programs, and they hosted a successful open house just this past weekend. This past year, the young adult section was revamped and relocated, with space and furniture designed for teens, giving middle and high schoolers a place to be together, surrounded by age-appropriate materials and activities. The children's nonfiction area was re-catalogued using Willows rather than Dewey Decimal in an effort to help Winchester's children find nonfiction books more easily. In 2023, the entire building was rewired for Wi-Fi, and new Wi-Fi access points were installed and increased. The library replaced desktops that could only run Windows 7, with 12 new desktops running Windows 11. Looking ahead to 2024, we anticipate updating security cameras and the antiquated phone system, both very much in need of up-to-date solutions. And as you heard tonight, there are some building and window repairs that we would like to look into. In closing, your library continues to serve the town well, thanks to strong support from town government, Friends of the Winchester Public Library, and all of you. Thank you for your ongoing support of the library and its mission.
Thank you. To the Board of Library Trustees. That concludes the reports of all the elected boards and committees. We are going to move onward to the reports of all the appointed committees. We have five to go through. First up is our Finance Committee. On behalf of the Finance Committee is Dr. John Miller. Dr. Miller, do you know how many minutes you require?
I practice to be within five.
Here we go.
I will see. But wait. I could do my own time.
You know, I joke, but in all honesty, you don't need to rush. Okay. When you're saying numbers, running through them very quickly is not, for some, the easiest to process.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you all for coming, and thank you all for hearing this report. As noted on each slide, all of FinCom's work and report is available on the Town Meeting webpage. We urge residents watching at home to visit that page to download our work. Three principles protect the town's AAA bond rating, a rating that only a handful of Massachusetts towns maintain. Operating reserves, or free cash, should not be used to fund ongoing activities within the operating budget. Free cash should not be used to fund additions to ongoing activities within the operating budget. We should avoid the addition of FTEs, where town management does not identify an ongoing permanent source of revenue to fund those additional FTEs. Finance Committee is pleased to report that the FY25 budget is structurally balanced without the use of operating reserves. What is the three-year outlook? The bottom line is that provided that Spring Town Meeting does not use significant operating reserves or free cash to fund FY25 operating expense, Finance Committee does not project the need for an operating override until the end of FY26 under all of our scenarios or the end of FY27 under two of our three scenarios. We have had many requests over the years for an analysis of the effect of debt exclusions and other permanent overrides, like the stabilization funds and the proposed CPA enactment. What is the effect of those other activities on the property tax? Here is the bottom line. Finance Committee recommends that the Town Meeting carefully consider the timing and the effect on the property tax of competing future needs for available taxpayer funds. These includes resetting the purposes and funding level of those two capital stabilization funds. A preliminary estimate by FinCom, it's preliminary, indicates that range is between $4 and $10 million. Replacement of Morocco in FY30, a $75 million debt exclusion is on the horizon if you assume a similar project to Lynch. And the adoption of a 1.5% Community Preservation Act surcharge in the fall of FY24, this would be a 1.5 million property tax surcharge that gains about $300,000 in state match. This is the chart that we've prepared in response to these requests. The bottom, it shows the effect of these outside funding sources on the property tax. Down at the bottom of the figure shows the addition to the property tax from current debt exclusions. Those are the blue. In red is the remainder of Lynch. On top of that is an assumed debt exclusion for Morocco beginning in FY30. On top of that, in green and purple, are the capital stabilization funds and the building stabilization funds. Those grow at 2.5% per year. On top of that is the assumed CPA, which, if passed in November of '24. And on top of that, in orange, is an assumed correction, an addition, the low-end correction to provide more funds for the capital and building stabilization funds. This slide shows the effect of that on an individual household. It converts the previous slide to an average residential property, valued at $1.2 million with an average, with a tax bill of $14.5,000. The combined blue and red bar shows the property tax an average resident would pay to support the debt exclusions, the BSF/CSF overrides, and a 1.5% surcharge for the CPA. In FY26, $2,900 or 20% of an average tax bill is paid for these purposes. The red bar shows the additions from upping the BSF and CSF if that were to happen in FY26, and the effect of the surcharge for the CPA. You see a little bump in 2030, that's assuming a debt exclusion override from Morocco in Finance Committee welcomes, you know, we have been communicating well with, you know, contrary to rumors. We have been communicating well with numerous people in town, and we are very pleased that the Select Board has stepped out and is going to take the lead on capital. We have done an enormous amount of work. If you look at Article 27, the additional background book, I think that's worthy of a careful review by all Town Meeting members. The data is important, and it's very informative. We believe an effective capital strategy is the most important step the town can take to keep operating costs and operating budgets down, to reduce the amount of future borrowing and debt service, which is another item on our operating budget, and to defer the timing of future borrowing. We commend the work we've done, and it's all available on the web, and you'll see the complete history of how we've been attacking capital. Thank you very much, and we look forward to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the Finance Committee for all your work. Next up, we will hear from the Education Facilities Planning and Building Committee, their co-chair, Mr. Chris Nixon. Mr. Chris Nixon, prior to the meeting, informed me it will be seven minutes. However, this is Mr. Chris Nixon. We're going to give him eight.
Well, well done.
Town Meeting, all those in favor of allowing the EFPBC to provide a report in eight minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Nixon, you have eight minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. Thank you all. And then, out of respect to Mr. Nardone, you gave me a promotion. I'm not the co-chair, I'm just the vice chair. Jay is sensible enough not to join me here tonight. Let me see if I have the right key. I hope I do. Very good. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here, happy to speak to Town Meeting members and staff and guests. Tonight's presentation is largely an update for you on issues or initiatives that I shared with you in the fall, beginning with Winchester High School. Tonight I have some updates for you on two projects here at WHS. The first is a progress report on our investigation into the first-floor concrete deterioration that we discussed a few months ago, and second, that bundling of the reflooring and reconfiguration of the high school gymnasium coming to you under Article 34. So first, to our concrete issues. You'll recall from our last Town Meeting that you appropriated $100,000 from free cash for additional testing and engineering design services for the repair and remediation of concrete deterioration that was largely uncovered last summer, though only seen on the first floor and in areas original to our 1970s structure. The nature and the locations of this deterioration was and remains a real concern for us. I'm pleased to share with you tonight that through additional observations, sampling and testing, our forensic engineering firm, SGH, has found no further evidence of concrete spalling, delamination, or corrosion in the upper floors of this building. In addition, SGH has completed its evaluation of the school's grade beams and finds no concerns over corrosion or lack of support below. As many of you will remember, the goals of last fall's Article 12 included the development of an action plan to stop the spread and acceleration of what we're seeing, with engineering drawings for concrete repair and remediation, and an accompanying cost estimate. So I can share with you all this evening that this work is very nearly complete. SGH's findings are that in general. The first-floor slab here is in good condition, though repairs are needed to limited areas above, and corrosion inhibitors are being recommended on the entirety of this slab from below and crawl spaces. We look forward to having a detailed scope and phasing plan with cost estimates next month for the EFPBC, with further development in time for our usual capital process, and we will certainly keep the Finance Committee, School Committee, and the Select Board informed. The second high school update tonight involves the gymnasium flooring and equipment reconfiguration. As we shared with you last fall, the high school gym needs work, and quickly. The 2014-2018 renovation project here did not include a new floor for the gym. Now it's pushing nearly 20 years old. The resilient rubber floor is failing, it's delaminating from the substrate, and the seams are separating, creating real safety concerns. In addition to the failing floor, the Athletic Department and the DPW have been raising the alarm for some time about the equipment and orientation of the gym, and recent MIAA rule changes limit our ability to host postseason play here due to the suitability and seating capacity of the space. Thanks to the support of the Select Board, who allocated $1.4 million in ARPA, towards the work, we will be asking for Town Meeting's support under Article 34 to fund the remainder so that the reflooring and the reconfiguration of the gym can be completed in time for this coming winter season. Second update tonight involves the district's 10-year facilities master plan update and our continued commitment to a New Morocco by 2030. Winchester diligently updates the school's facility master plan every decade. This important exercise has served us well, making the case for essential school-building projects, whether direct-funded by us or in partnership with the MSBA. For many years, district enrollment grew in Winchester at rates that were hardly imaginable. Post-COVID, this is no longer the case. But is this our new normal? An essential component of our master plan is that long-term five- and 10-year enrollment and demographic study. That will examine not only our recent enrollment trends, but also reviews our demolition and building permits, planned housing developments, and zoning changes, as well as macro-employment and enrollment trends in eastern Massachusetts and throughout the greater metro Boston area. This is especially important as we keep our eye on a New Morocco Elementary School. The Morocco Life Extension Plan, supported by the debt exclusion override, question one, extended the life of this school until 2030. But how many students should a New Morocco accommodate in 2030, 2040, and years later? 440 kids? 580? What about our preschool? Do we wish to expand Winchester's district preschool to Morocco, just as we're doing at Lynch? These are just two of many questions that the master plan will consider in consultation with the School Committee and the Administration. The timing of this request is terribly important. This past December, the School Committee voted its intent, as you heard from Mr. Hopcroft, to submit to the MSBA Core Replacement Program a statement of interest for a New Morocco. We have heard consistently from the MSBA for years that our facility master plans make strong cases for our facility ambitions, and they've played an important role in the MSBA's decision to partner with us. And speaking of school projects with the MSBA, I'm so pleased to close tonight with some continued good news on the new Lynch Elementary School project. Our contractor is Break Builders. They took control of the site as scheduled in December, following Fall Town Meeting, and our extraordinarily mild winter has been a tremendous help towards rapid progress. How rapid? This is what the gym's going to look like in September of '25. This is what it looked like at 4 o'clock this afternoon. I like that. They're flying. They're just flying. So it's exciting. As I shared with you last fall, I have more good news. We were budgeting a total construction cost of $67.7 million, including abatement and The cost for add alternates, sorry, that didn't align well. The cost for our four add alternates, in addition to the base scope to provide both ground and roof-mounted solar, was excluded from our MSBA project scope and budget agreement. So we found it necessary in the fall to authorize alternative sources of funding, if necessary. So how did we do? Well, I'm glad I highlighted that in yellow, since the pagination is screwed up, but we did great. The base project came in nearly $2 million under budget. This permitted us to pick up the vast majority of solar scope without additional borrowing authorizations. And at the end of the day, the new Lynch is expected to be a net-zero building, avoiding generations of utility bills. As I often say, I'll put in a plug. You can always learn more about the Lynch project, as well as the New Morocco, at Lynch2025.com. Just look for the "What About Morocco?" page. Lastly, I want to recognize and thank the members of the EFPBC. This is a tremendous group of professionals with expertise in design, engineering, planning, accessibility, construction, and contract law. The committee remains as engaged today as it has ever been, and it continues to be. Our real privilege to serve the students, teachers, and staff of Winchester Public Schools in delivering creative and effective spaces for teaching and learning on time and on budget. And none of this, of course, would be possible without the tremendous support of town staff, whose work in the background makes ours look easy. On behalf of the EFPBC, I want to recognize and thank Meg White, Andrew Marin, Frida Cannavan, and Erin Allen for all of their support. Thank you for your continued support of our district's key projects, big and small. Look forward to sharing more with you later this Town Meeting, under Articles 19 and 34.
Thank you to the Education Facilities Planning and Building Committee. Mr. Nixon, eight minutes and two seconds. Eight minutes and two seconds. Next up, I believe we have a report on the Committee on Government Regulations. Yep. So on behalf of the Committee on Government Regulations, their Chair, Mr. Colin Simpson.
Oh, I get a slide. Madam Moderator, thank you. Good evening to all the elected and appointed boards, Town Meeting members, department heads, and the residents of Winchester. My name is Colin Simpson. I am the current Chair of the Committee on Government Regulations. This is less of a report and more of a plug, an advertisement. For those members who are newly elected to the Town Meeting... For those members who are newly elected to the town meeting, the Committee on Government Regulations is one of seven standing committees of the town meeting, and the duty of the committee is to provide favorable or unfavorable reporting to the town meeting on all warrant articles that affect the Code of Bylaws and the Home Rule Charter. In addition, the committee is charged with the decennial review of the Code of Bylaws. I was elected chair just in time. As you may recall, in the Fall Town Meeting, there were two articles in particular that were brought to the body referencing amendments to the Finance Committee. After much discussion and debate, it was concluded that this body, our body, that the decennial review would be called to not only review the amendments before the Fall 2023 Town Meeting, but to also review the entire Code of Bylaws. The last official review was conducted in 2008, so we are a little late. And presented the town meeting in 2009. Technically, the town of Winchester is well overdue, and I am here this evening to inform you that 30 days after the dissolvement of this spring town meeting in 2024, an eight-member Committee on Government Regulations will assemble and build a schedule and will assign the 24 chapters, maybe 25 by the time the town meeting is over, to the membership for review. The town clerk will assist in the clerical needs of this committee, along with the town attorney providing legal guidance. The process calls for a public hearing at a time to be scheduled, and we will accept comments and suggestions for consideration. Any and all amendments to this document will be presented to the town meeting for your consideration and potential acceptance. It is our plan to conduct this review in the early fall, maybe a little bit in the summer, too, and present our findings in the spring 2025 Town Meeting. There are currently two vacancies on the Committee of Government Regulations, and this is the plug, and we encourage you to express your interest to your precinct chair. You're going to have a meeting shortly after this. And we hope to fill these vacancies this evening. You do not need to have a legal background to participate. However, we would welcome members with a strong editorial skills. So with that, I thank you very much and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Committee on Government Regulations. Mr. Simpson, for clarifying, what are the two precincts that currently have open seats? Are owed. Precincts four and seven. When you meet, you will be asked to choose someone from your precinct to represent you on the Committee on Government Regulations. As you can see, as presented, there is some very critical work that is before them for this body and for the town as a whole. So please, please think about volunteering for those spots. Next up, we will hear from the Conservation Commission. On their behalf is their chair, Dr. David Miller. Yes. You have a report? Paper? No, neither. Okay. We will not be hearing. They win the time. Next up, we have Climate Action Advisory Committee. On their behalf is their chair, Mr. Rick Eno. The Climate Action Advisory Committee is actually advisory to the Select Board. However, the town meeting has requested previously to hear reports and updates from this body, so we will be hearing them under Article 1.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening all. My name is Rick Eno, the chair of our town's Climate Action Advisory Committee. Now pleased to give you an update tonight on our town's progress. Three topics. A little background for you on our committee. Secondly, where we stand with regards to implementing our town's climate action plan. And two priorities. We're working on a number of things, but two priorities I'd like to share with you tonight that are very important, and we'd like to get your support. First of all, our committee, nine members appointed by the Select Board. Our mission is to help Winchester successfully implement its climate action plan. We advise the Select Board, and we work closely with Mr. Ken Pruitt, our town's Sustainability Director. The climate action plan is on our website. If you haven't read it, I'd encourage you to read it. It's very well-written, it's a very good plan, it gives us a roadmap for how we, as a town, will adapt in the future. Two overarching goals. First is to reduce carbon pollution 80% by 2050, which is very much in line with the state of Massachusetts' goals. And secondly, ensure that Winchester remains resilient amid a changing climate. 69 actions grouped in five categories: energy supply, buildings, transportation, solid waste, and climate resilience. Over the last year, our committee went through a detailed review of where we stand with the plan, and I won't go through all the details, but rest assured, you should be happy that almost half of our 69 specific actions are in progress. Five are completed. We have a good plan, and we feel we're making great progress against it. We try to be very selective with time in front of this body and with the Select Board, and there are two things I'd like to go over right now, which we would like to inform you about and gain your support for. First is Wind Power 100. Wind Power was launched in 2017 by a vote of town meeting. The default gives us 20% more clean energy than the state minimum, but Wind Power 100, you can opt up to and get 100% carbon-free electricity. Our committee believes this is probably the fastest, easiest, and probably cheapest way for all of you to contribute to our town's climate goals. Wind Power 100 costs just one cent per kilowatt more than the standard default rate for a typical Winchester house. That's $8.50 per month to opt up to 100% clean energy. Also pleased to announce that our town manager signed a contract that's going to lower that to about $3 per month for you to opt up to 100% clean energy over our default rate. So strongly encourage you to pursue this. Per the printing of this, we had 430 homes in Winchester enrolled. I found out this morning, we're up to 487. We can make a nice dent in that if a number of you sign up for Wind Power 100. Takes less than five minutes to enroll. I'd strongly encourage you to do that. The second area we'd like your support is on an energy-efficient new building code. The current code in Winchester is called a stretch energy code. There's a proposed code called the Specialized Stretch Code, which will apply for new construction only, not renovation nor additions. And what this means is new construction will be all-electric or pre-wired for a future conversion. This has already been adopted by 33 towns around the Commonwealth. Why do we want to bring this before you? What's important about it? By adopting this, it sets us on course to make us eligible for between $100,000 to $200,000 annual additional state funding for Winchester. We currently get about $100,000 per year from Green Communities Act. There's negligible construction cost difference, pre-wiring avoids future home retrofits, and it helps keeps us on track with our climate action plan. So next steps, mirroring what Michelle Pryor told us earlier, we're going to communicate, and we're going to try to collaborate and reach out to a number of parties on this initiative. We're going to meet with boards and committees, buildings and developers. We're going to hold information sessions, and we're going to research early adopting towns and understand what impact this code had on their activity. And just as a heads up, this does require a vote of town meeting, and we'll be evaluating a warrant article for 2024 Fall Town Meeting. That's my report. If you have any questions, reach out to anyone from the committee. We look forward to working with you in this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The Climate Action Advisory Committee. That concludes the report under Article 1. It is moved in second that the reports of town officials, boards, committees, and commissions be received and filed. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. And all the reports received are now officially on file. There are also two additional reports that were in paper form, coming from the Council on Aging and the Board of Assessors, which you can also read, which is at the town clerk's desk out front. With that, as our bylaws say, after the last business of Article 1 is for the precincts to meet. The TMMA reached out to your moderator and requested that we secure rooms for each precinct. There is information out in the hallway about where those meetings are located. If you need any support, please ask staff. We will be breaking for 30 minutes, so you can have a collaborative conversation with your precincts. The scouts, Girl Scouts are also selling snacks and refreshments. So we will be back in 30 minutes, which is, I don't have a watch on, at 8:30. And at 8:30, we'll be hearing thereafter the report of the planning board, and then also moving on to their article. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Alan Idin, and you are watching the first session of Winchester's Spring 2024 Town Meeting. Town meeting is now in recess for 30 minutes for the precincts to meet. So let's review what has happened so far at this meeting. It's all been reports of various committees. There are 11 articles on what they call the consent agenda, which those articles are not expected to require any debate. However, a couple of them are financial issues, and by the town's bylaws, those cannot be considered before the 1st of May, so those will be postponed till next Monday. Town meeting opened at 6:30. There was a remembrance for late firefighter John Dooley Jr., who passed away about two weeks ago, very well-known in town and a lifelong member of the town, electrician and a firefighter, and he will be missed by a lot of people in town. Preliminary motions were passed, such as allowing coverage by cable TV. And then we started the report, board reports. First one was Michelle Pryor, the chair of the Select Board. She talked about the use of the ARPA funds, the capital needs of the town, supporting the Select Board articles, of which there are several, and the volunteer opportunities within the town. Beth Rudolph, our town manager, said that the Lynch School project should be ready for occupancy in September 2025, so about 18 months from now. The Waterfield project has been approved and is moving forward with design and financing. The town has $19.3 million in free cash. And she also said that only 14 communities in Massachusetts have a AAA bond rating like us. And she presented some graphs on historical fund use and projected fund use. Excuse me. Tom Hopcroft, Chair of the School Committee, said the Lynch School is going to be a net-zero energy-use building. There was more on that in a subsequent report, and that the School Committee is now focusing on Morocco School as the next project. He talked about the educational objectives and procedures, says that the town invests $17,995 per student, which is among the lowest in our peer communities. We have high-performing schools, and he highlighted some of the system savings that have been done by the School Committee and School Department. We heard from the chair of the Board of Health that they hired an environmental, the Board of Health has hired an environmental health inspector. Talked about road and control, talked about plans for new restaurant plan reviews and hazardous waste collection, and their work with the Coalition for a Safer Community. We heard from the Chair of the Library trustees, who thanked the community for the support of the library. Said the library had 168,000 visitors last year, and she referred to the items that are available to loan. And she says, before you go and look to a site to get something for free, check to see what's available at the library that you can borrow. In 2023, the building was, the library building was rewired for Wi-Fi, and new security cameras are going to be updated this year. Dr. John Miller from the Finance Committee gave a brief report saying the budget is balanced without the use of reserves, and a need for an override in the near, future is not projected. He did say that in FY '30, they project a debt exclusion to build the new Morocco School. And the town meeting should consider effects on property taxes of the Community Preservation Act and stabilization fund needs. And it's important to keep these funds, keep these operating funds and building stabilization funds funded to keep the operating costs of the town down. We heard from Education Facilities Planning and Building Committee Chair Chris Nixon. He said several issues, a couple of issues here at the high school. One was a report on concrete deterioration. He said there are some areas that were not renovated in the latest renovation of the high school and date back to 1970. There was deterioration discovered. But he also said that the findings of the engineer found that the deterioration was not as bad as expected, and they will proceed with some mitigation of those things. The gym floor is now also 20 years old. It was not renovated, along with the, I think he said 20 years old. I think it's more than 20 years old. But anyway, it's not renovated when the school was renovated. And that is a project that is coming up for consideration later in town meeting. Morocco, again, Morocco School is next on the master plan. The growth in enrollment in the town, school enrollment, has slowed, so they are carefully studying a lot of different factors to study what the growth needs are and how big a new Morocco School would need to be. He said the Mass School Building Administration looks favorably on the town's plans, and they are going to be submitting a statement of intent for rebuilding of the Morocco School. He said there is rapid progress at the Lynch School construction site due to mild weather. The project came in $2 million under budget, which allowed them to add some solar panels and other things for a net-zero energy-use building. Colin Simpson from the Committee on Government Regulations said they report on all articles that affect the codes and the bylaws of the town, and they are going to do an extensive review of those, which will be presented at Spring 2025 Town Meeting, a year from now. And the last committee heard from was the Climate Action Committee. He said they advised the Select Board on how to reach goals, and their roadmap is on the town's website. Their goal is to reduce the carbon emissions in the town by 80% by 2050, which is in line with the state's goals. He also gave a plug for Wind Power 100. The consolidation of electrical power is available to residents to purchase their electricity, and Wind Power 100 adds about one cent per kilowatt hour to the rate and is 100% renewable, and said that that's a way that local residents can contribute to climate action. He said currently over 400 homes are on this Wind Power 100, and it's easy to go to the town's website and sign up for it. He also commented on what they call the stretch energy codes for new construction in the town at some point to be all-electric. And again, now town meeting has gone into recess. It's a 30-minute recess while they elect, well, the precincts conduct their business, such as electing or appointing new members if they don't have enough. So we will be back with a recap of tonight's meeting at the conclusion of the meeting. So stay with us. Thank you for joining us.
WinKim is more like the public library. It's a resource for folks who live or work in Winchester. But instead of loaning out But instead of loaning out books or those types of resources, we're loaning out cameras. People see us at government meetings like a town meeting or select board meeting and they think that's sort of WinCam's role, but there's really a lot more to what we're covering and what we're documenting. For example, the high school sports that we cover. There's all kinds of community events that we not only document, but we normally will carry live and we're actually archiving all of those too. So the town's history is actually being recorded. In addition, WinCam is a great place to pick up some professional production skills at a reduced price. People are often really surprised when they come down and visit us for the first time. They're amazed at the facility itself and the resources that we're able to offer to residents. People are always like, I can't believe I didn't know this was here. Well, access to media shouldn't be limited to those who can pay the high price, right? So that's what community media is all about. You should be able to come in and learn how to create your own media and you should be able to turn on your television or your computer and access local information and entertainment. That's what WinCam does really well. That's what we're all about. That's the mission and that's what public access in its core was set up to do from the very beginning.
We need volunteers. In order to keep up the level of sports coverage WinCam currently provides, we are in need of additional support. What does WinCam cover? WinCam broadcasts Winchester High School volleyball, football, basketball, hockey and more. These games stream live on our website as well as on our cable channels. All games are then uploaded to YouTube for replay. If you're interested in sports broadcasting, camera operation, commentating and more, email us at wincam@wincam.org to see how you can get involved. There are several ways to watch local content on WinCam, whether it's live or on replay. If you're a cable subscriber in Winchester, you can watch the public channel on Comcast Eight or Verizon Thirty-Six, the education channel on Nine or Thirty-Six, the government channel on Twenty-Two or Thirty-Eight, and finally the HD channel on Ten Seventy-Three or Twenty-One Thirty-Six. Don't have cable? You can stream all our channels on our website at wincam.org under the Live Streams tab and choose which channel you'd like to watch. In case you missed something live, you can always navigate to the On Demand tab on our website where we keep recordings of the most recent municipal government meeting coverage as well as other local programming. Finally, you can also find these meetings and nearly all our live content, sports coverage, community events and more on the WinCam YouTube channel. Make sure to follow and subscribe for more Winchester content and info just like this.
To the precinct representatives that have the folders, could you please turn those in to the town clerk staff outside of the auditorium? I will repeat that again, to the precinct representatives who have the folders that were completed by the town meeting members, can you please turn those into the town clerk's office outside the auditorium? Town meeting members, please take your seats, let's go, come on, you can do it. All right, town meeting members, we're going to continue on with Article Three, a majority vote is required. Article Three is to hear the report of the planning board. The requirement of the planning board to provide a report to this body is actually a state statute, so it's a standalone article. It is moved and seconded that the report of the planning board be received and filed. On behalf of the planning board is their chair, Dr. Carrie Layton. Try it again. Try it again.
Okay, here we go. Thank you, Madam Moderator, thank you, town meeting. And on behalf of the planning board, first I want to introduce us, we've had a lot of turnover lately, I am your recently placed chair, Carrie Layton. Brian Vernalia, recently elected to the planning board and thrown right into the hot seat of vice chair and clerk. MVP and recent chair, Di Ebgerius, fan favorite, Nick Rosetos, and rounding out the Fab Five, we have John Cortezus. We work in symbiosis with Taylor Herman, our town planner. Suzanne Gill offers us admin support. And I want to mention Griffin O'Neil. When we saw the work ahead of us, Taylor acted quickly to grab us a Northeastern co-op student. Griffin has been extending our reach and our work in bringing us lots of detail for the 3A process in North Main. He graduates from Northeastern this spring, and we are very grateful to him and we wish him well. Yeah, way to go, Griffin. Okay, lots of people to thank, I can't name them all or I am never going to beat Michelle Pryor's time. So I do want to call out Sally Dale and Yi Ching Scott, our recent planning board members who worked with grit and heart and dedication and brilliance to the very last hour of their tenure with us. We owe them a debt of gratitude and we do miss them. And I also want to thank WinCam, who covers our meetings and brings them into your living room on our regular meetings, but also for many, many extra meetings that we had this winter, they really went the extra mile and we do appreciate it. And to everyone on this list, you challenge us, you support us, you're a pleasure to work with and you make us a better board. What have we been up to? So, an update on some multi-unit housing projects around town. I don't have an update on Washington and Swanton, they are in an extended due diligence. When we know more, we will tell you more. Same for 10 Converse Place, I think they're still in an appeal process, so they have not come before us. The River Street and Cambridge Street developments have both been completed, we are issuing certificates of occupancy to them, they're not full yet, but they are populating. These other four projects, 730 Main Street, which is the lot next to Wine Country, the Fels Hardware project, and 8789 Cross Street, which will bring nine units to the Washington side of Cross Street, are in different stages of drawing building permits, restructuring, financing, different things for different folks, but they're past the planning board and before building. And then the Waterfield lot. Waterfield was a labor for this town, and I'm happy to report that we approved the final special permit in March of 2024. This project will bring 56 residential units right next to the MBTA station, 40 of which are deed restricted as affordable housing. They retained public parking spaces for the building and put private parking for the residents under the building. And they met really admirable sustainability goals, so they installed bike racks for the public and for the residents, they put in EV charging stations, you can see the solar panels on the roof, and they elected to adopt stringent and passive house energy efficiency standards. They, again, are in the permitting process, the earliest we think they'll break ground will be next spring and we will keep you updated. Where are we for affordable housing? Shamefully behind. We have a moral obligation to do better here and we have a selfish interest to get up to Safe Harbor. We are currently out of Safe Harbor, which means that we have no control over 40B projects in town. We need three things to get into Safe Harbor. We need an updated housing production plan, which as our town manager mentioned, is in process. Ours expired in February of 2024, and I'm sure we'll hear more by fall. We need to commit 10% of Winchester's total housing inventory as affordable housing. This is tricky, over 70% of our housing inventory in town, and I think maybe as high as 78% are single-family homes. So this is a challenging goal for us. And we need to demonstrate commitment to that goal by contributing 40 subsidized housing units to our inventory each year, which we have not done, so we are out of Safe Harbor and we are working our way towards it. We also want to address the missing middle. So the missing middle are parcels of land, are units of housing that are between that single-family price point and the affordable housing price point. So if folks in affordable housing have an improvement in circumstances, or if our folks living in single-family houses want to downsize or need a depth of inventory for different reasons, there's not a lot to choose from in town. So we've had this interest, we had this interest on our radar for a long time. Slightly higher density of multifamily housing will make slightly more Little A affordable, not quite affordable housing standards, but that slightly more affordable housing that lets, you know, our grad students, our siblings, our parents live near us but not with us, and increases choice for folks in town. It also can help address accessibility issues that can be an obstacle to aging in place in our homes. So this is something that we've had on our radar for a long time. It came up with the master plan process, this is not the Capitol Master Plan, this is the townwide master plan that we published in March or April of 2020, kind of a blur, honestly. But this is the vision for the town in 2030. And one of our very earliest strategies was to work on that middle housing and to generally re-envision the North Main Street corridor. So we talked about developing the public realm and improving the public realm, can we make that a more social area, can we increase the services in that area, can we improve the streetscape, can we protect from heat islands, and can we get to addressing the underlying zoning, which is currently a little outdated and it's not reflecting the uses that people want to be able to use their properties for. This sort of, you know, enter MBTA 3A. So MBT 3A, which I am lucky to report, I will not be presenting to you this evening, I'm leaving that to Taylor Herman, but I want to touch on it here because it lowered the barrier to multifamily housing in town, and it was a mandate from the state to increase access to multifamily housing. We had that goal to address the missing middle, near our center business district anyway, and so we spent a lot of time thinking about where we wanted to put those parcels, and because of our goals for North Main, we essentially dragged the mod from the north end of the Rotary up North Main so that we can sort of continue to work on those goals. And from here on, we're going to focus on building cohesive guidelines for the design of those parcels that will keep that feeling that you have in the center business district and drag it all the way to the Woburn border. When folks come in, when they buy a parcel of land, they come to us first, they don't show up with construction vehicles, they sit at the table and they say, you know, this is my property, this is what I want to do with it, and then we walk them through what their options are. So the 3A will create an opportunity for multifamily housing, and what we want to do as a town is say, but, the underlying zoning is definitely more attractive, it will allow you to have first-floor commercial, it will allow you to get incentives for including more inclusionary housing units or for meeting sustainability goals. So one of our major initiatives that we've been working on since last Fall Town Meeting and that we hope to bring to you as a change in zoning bylaws for next Fall Town Meeting is reworking some of that underlying zoning to make it workable, to make it attractive, and to reflect the interests of the town as we redevelop and re-envision North Main. We've been working with consultant Michael Wang, who owns Form and Place, he's incredible, he has brought lots of really attractive multifamily homes to cute towns like ours, he's spent a lot of time studying our town, he's presented some renderings of options for the town that would not only meet 3A requirements but also goals for North Main. He is certified in Form-Based Code, which is a very expensive option, but it's one that's grabbed everyone's attention lately, so he will be qualified to educate us on whether that's money worth pursuing or whether there are elements of our existing underlying zoning that can be brought into the discussion that will create and preserve the same look and feel that we're used to in Winchester while we work to expand the economic opportunities of this corridor. The ZRAC's been incredible for this, the Zoning Review Advisory Committee, and feedback from the public, North Main Street zoning is already underway and we hope to have it for you in Fall Town Meeting. And I also want to point out that we're using that North Main corridor in sub-districts so that we can be sensitive to abutters. We don't want our tallest, biggest building next to residential areas, so we've created sub-districts so that we can ask neighbors what uses they want to see close by, and we can be flexible to the part of the street that we're looking at. Once we get through the North Main zoning, which again, we hope to have for Fall, we will Once we get through the North Main zoning, which, again, we hope to have for Fall, we will turn down the street, and we will look at what we can do for improvements at Swanton and our own Bermuda Triangle, the Holton Cross intersection, as our gateway to the light industrial area. These are, North Main and light industrial are two of our most under-leveraged economic opportunities in town, and we really want to spend some time thinking about them so that we can raise our commercial tax base as much as possible. So I would like to say that we will have light industrial revisions for you at Spring Town Meeting, but most likely that will be Fall of 2025. There are a lot of voices in that discussion, and we want to make sure that we hear them all. There's also an Economic Development Strategic Plan that is already in the works, and that will unfold for the next couple of years. That will help us more accurately identify the areas of town that we are under-leveraging and give us an implementation plan for how we can meet and achieve those goals. Lots of opportunities to engage with the Planning Board. I mentioned the Z-Rack. The Z-Rack was a real opportunity for interested residents and abutters to dive into the zoning and have a huge voice in the process of writing these. We want that vehicle to stay the same. We want the Z-Rack to exist, but we want the passengers on it to change as we change projects. So when we move over to light industrial, we want to make sure we're including business owners, folks who have experience in light industrial industry, and of course residential abutters to that area so that we are hearing in depth the needs of that area, the needs of those industries, and we can produce a really great product for Winchester. Please sign up to receive the Town Planner's newsletter. It's a great way to stay informed on what we're doing. Hop on WinCam or come to our public meetings so that you can engage with us in person and stay on top of what we're doing. And you're always free to email us. So I think I am under time, so I will wish you be well, do good work, and keep in touch.
Thank you, Dr. Layton, and thank you to the Planning Board for all your work since we last met. I believe town meeting is ready for the vote. All those in favor and accepting the Planning Board's motion under Article Two. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and the Planning Board's report for the Spring 2024 Town Meeting is now on file. We are now going to move to Article Four. For town meeting members, there is some slight Scribner errors on the motion in your warrant booklet. There is a blue handout that was at the table for everyone to pick up when you signed in. This is what it looks like. That has all of the correct Scribner errors corrected on it. So this is the motion that we will be taking. If you don't have it, please make your way out to the Clerk's office and grab a copy of it so you know what is being discussed during this debate. Article Four is to see if the town meeting will vote to amend our zoning bylaws for the town of Winchester by adding a Section Eight, which is a special district regulations, a new Section 8.11 MBTA overlay district, and amend the official zoning map of 2019, and certain other sections of the zoning bylaw to integrate the new section into current zoning bylaws, and make any minor modifications to the text required for consistency with existing format of the bylaws, or take any action thereof. It has moved and seconded that the town approve the zoning amendments in Article Four with the changes noted per the document dated April 26, 2024, provided to town meeting members. That is this document. On behalf of the Planning Board, we will be hearing from the Town Planner, Mr. Taylor Herman. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So my name is Taylor Herman. This is the first time that some of you are probably seeing me. So I would like to also thank the Planning Board and everyone else who helps me in the Planning Department. I know that we're all very excited for Article Four, and I have certainly picked a good one to introduce myself to you all. To go through some of the changes that we have, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, there are some changes between the article and the motion. 8.11.5 dimensional requirements. The minimum area in MOD 4 has been changed from 90 to 70%. And I should note that these are all highlighted with more detail in the background. 8.11.72 site plan review. G architectural design has been included. 8.11.72 site plan review authority. The design guidelines are non-binding has been removed from this section. 8.11.72 site plan review authority. Only address has been removed and replaced with including but not limited to. And there are eight instances of Scribner's errors from the introduction, Section 8.11.2, 8.11.5, 8.11.7, 8.11.8. I'm happy to field any questions about the specificity of these after the presentation. So what is MBTA 3A? Something that may have heard of in the news? We'll see. So in 2021, the state enacted the MBTA Communities Act as part of an economic bill. Section 3A of Master Law 40, hence the reason for the name MBTA 3A, requires that a community which is served by the MBTA or is adjacent to a community that is served by the MBTA create a zone that allows for multifamily housing to be permitted as of right. The state classifies this multifamily housing to be three or more units in one building. The state has also made it clear that communities who decide not to comply with MBTA 3A will become ineligible for state funding for housing, infrastructure, and capital projects, as well as open ourselves up to legal battles. There are 177 total communities that have to comply with this. The state has bucketed those into four different categories. That's rapid transit, commuter rail, adjacent community, and adjacent small town. Winchester, because we have two commuter rail stops, is considered a commuter rail So how do we comply? Well, the state has made sure to put a lot of restrictions on what we can and cannot do, but being a commuter rail community means that we are required to zone for by-right multifamily housing around our stations. We've elected to use one of our stations to zone around, but it has to be within a half-mile radius of one of our stations. In total, we are required to zone for 1,220 units with a minimum of 37 total acres needs to be included in this zone. Half of both of those requirements, 610 units and 805 acres, must be located within that half-mile of our transit station. So if we take Winchester Center, which we are using, we go out one half-mile, half of these requirements have to be within that. We need to be clear that this is not a building mandate. This is only a zoning mandate. The MBTA Communities Act does not require us to build 1,220 units. It only requires us to zone for that. Once the zoning changes are passed, there is no requirement for the zoning units to be built. And I don't want to give away too many of our secrets that you'll see in the next few slides, but you'll see a map that encompasses what we are calling the MOD. We currently have 750 units in those, and those can all contribute to the 1,220. From the state's perspective, you know, why is the state doing this and why now? Well, the state has cited four primary reasons for implementing this mandate. They've noted that there is a statewide shortage, housing shortage, which paired with statewide high cost of living, people are being forced out of communities and preventing new, and it's preventing new people from entering communities. Wages have also overall decreased, meaning that more and more people can no longer afford a home, and those who can afford a home are overbearon by spending more than a quarter of their income on their housing needs. The state has created MBTA to remove zoning barriers for multifamily housing, and this is specifically around MBTA transit stations. So how did we get here today in our process? Well, this is three years in the making. The process started with our previous planner, Brian Zakelli, who you might be more used to being up here than me. At that time, three years ago, we worked with an initial consultant who helped us build an understanding of what would be possible and what wouldn't be possible for the town of Winchester. We've explored many options for our districts. We've explored many options for our bylaws, ultimately landing on what you'll see tonight and what you'll be voting on. To help us with this, we created a committee called the Z-Rack, the Zoning Review Advisory Committee. This is a committee of 10 community members who all had different priorities and ideas of zoning and what should and what shouldn't be implemented. By the way, shout out to everyone on the Z-Rack who's here and at home. We honestly couldn't have done it without you or gotten to this point without you. Thank you. Anyway, with their help, we've been able to present this option that is here in front of you tonight, which will be fully compliant with the state mandate while also making sure that we have protected as many of our historical assets as possible, preserve as much of ground floor retail and commercial as possible, and create development opportunities in areas which are only reasonable and not in areas which are not. So where is the MBTA overlay district, or MOD for short? The MOD is comprised of four smaller sub-districts. MOD 1 is predominantly made up of the central business districts, North Core, but also includes a little bit of the Town Common and East Core. MOD 2 is made up of North Wedge Pond condos on Lake Street. MOD 3 is what the GBD 2 is today, the area between Skilling's Road and Swanton, or Stop and Shop and Andrea's Pizza. MOD 4 is the Parkview. That whole lot is one sub-district. By selecting this MOD, we've not only been able to significantly or strategically comply with the state mandate while also minimizing the effect that it could have on our downtown. It should be clear to note that nothing below the Quill Rotary, when we're talking about downtown, nothing below that Rotary is included in this MOD or this overlay district. And the overlay will not affect anything on Thompson Street, Church Street, Mount Vernon Street, Main Street, between the bookstore and the bridge, or the block between Park and Vine, which is the Co-op Bank and the pharmacy. None of those have been included in the MOD, and none of those will be touched in this. We know that these areas mean a lot to our community, so we found a solution that still allows us to comply without introducing disruption to our downtown. Instead, we focus on sites like gas stations and the already-approved Fells Hardware, the Stop and Shop, the fast-food restaurants along North Main Street, and the Parkview It's important to note, again, that we are only zoning. We're not required to build. But if we were to see something be built, what can we expect? Well, for MODs 2, 3, and 4, that's North Wedge Pond condos, GBD 2, and Parkview, we can expect something similar to what you see up on the screen. We're required to zone for an average of 15 units per acre, and this is what you can typically see for 15 units per acre. For downtown, however, we want to make sure that we are preserving as much as our retail and our ground floor commercial space as we possibly can. So the examples that you see up on the screen aren't necessarily for our downtown. They're for those other MOD districts. Our downtown will have more development standards that preserve the existing character. So as Carrie mentioned earlier, we do continue to have two options when we are introducing this zoning overlay. When a developer comes in to propose a development, they can either-
Mr. Herman, you have reached your 10 minutes. How much more time would you desire?
Three minutes, please.
How many?
Three.
To town meeting, all those in favor of offering the speaker four more minutes? All those opposed? Ayes have it, four more minutes.
We'll continue to have two different options for developers to use. Our overlay, which is the MOD, the MBTA compliance, or our underlying zoning. We do believe that specifically downtown and with the upcoming North Main Street, our underlying zoning still continues to be the more economically advantageous option for developers, which will require us to continue to use ground floor retail by allowing them to build higher and larger, but still remain within the same context of which we see It is important to note that although we are allowing for by-right residential housing, we are still including development standards that must be approved and reviewed by the Planning Board before a project can be built. And those are including but not limited to several of them that you see on the screen, but most importantly is architectural design, height, and setbacks. Those all do have to be approved by the Planning Board before development can move forward. Again, as Carrie mentioned before, we can use this as an opportunity. It is something that we are being asked to do by the state, but we can use this as an opportunity to build more housing for our older adults looking to downsize, young adults looking to return home, low- and middle-income family, and anyone who needs more accessibility needs. These are just a few examples of many people who could use this. And lastly, it is important to note that compliance is mandatory on this. This is a state law, and this is not optional. Most of us know that there are other communities fighting this law. That's not a surprise to a lot of us. But it is our recommendation that we let these other communities fight. At some point in the future, a decision will be made that will help us better understand what our options are to move forward. This, like all other zoning, is something that can change in the future. If we believe that based off of what is coming forth in other communities should result in a change of ours, we can reassess what we have in front of us and make that determination at that time. However, we do not want to lose, or we do not want to risk the loss of funding. We do not want to risk the loss of anything that can help our town in the future. So we ask you to comply, or to help us comply with this tonight, and we can always have time to reassess in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will hear the recommendations of boards or committees on Article Four. I've asked the boards and committees' recommendations to be limited to three minutes. There are a handful that would like your attention, so I will recognize them. First up will be the Select Board. I believe their Chair, Michelle Pryor, will be providing a recommendation to town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We do not need much more than a few seconds. We voted favorable action on Article Four this evening, subject to what we've heard from the Chair and the Town Planner, objective design guidelines to, I think, preserve the downtown retail spaces and the business district. And our understanding is that those guidelines will be developed over the summer. So Select Board was 5-0 in favor of this article.
Thank you very much. Next up, let's hear a recommendation from the Finance Committee. On their behalf is Dr. John Miller, their Chair.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Finance Committee recommends unfavorable action on Article Four by a vote of 6 to 4. The Chair not voting. Those voting unfavorable action believe the town should wait to see the results in the Supreme Judicial Court this fall with respect to the litigation involving Milton. Those voting favorable action on our committee believe that there is no adverse impact from acting now.
Thank you. May we hear a recommendation from the Council on Aging? Is that a written report? It's a written report. There's a recommendation on the Council of Aging in written form for the body's consideration. If you did not get that, it was out on the Clerk's table. Do we have a recommendation from the Housing Partnership Board? On behalf of the Housing Partnership Board, Mr. John Serbeer, their Chair.
Madam Moderator, town meeting members, my name is John Serbeer. I'm Chair of the Winchester's Housing Partnership Board. As a reminder, the Partnership Board was created by town meeting to advise town meeting and other town boards on housing-related issues, especially housing that serves moderate and middle-income households and individuals. Six of the 13 members are appointed by the town moderator. Seven are representatives of other town boards, including the Select Board, Council on Aging, School Committee, and the Planning Board. The Partnership Board has closely followed the implementation of Section 3A since this legislation affecting communities served by- legislation affecting communities served by the MBTA was passed in January 2021, more than three years ago. And this includes looking at and following how different Boston-area communities are responding. By a vote of 11 to 0, the Housing Partnership Board supports approval of the Planning Board's proposed response presented in Article 4, since, as described, it satisfies the necessary numerical criteria that the state is looking for, therefore providing continued access to important sources of state funding. At the same time, members are disappointed that the proposed response excludes any portion of the town center, where it has been a longstanding town policy to provide additional housing options that would improve the economic fatality of the center, as well as providing increased tax revenues to the town. We also wish that the current proposal went further towards making it easier to actually build what is referred to as missing-middle housing. And these are smaller, as you've seen in some of the charts or diagrams, these are smaller and mid-sized, multiple-family projects, such as located at 15 Dick Street and those located along Elmwood. In that, looking at communities throughout the Boston region, many are responding in the same manner as Winchester, where the primary objective is to satisfy the state's numerical criteria in order not to lose access to funding. Others, though, are trying to be more proactive to actually achieve meaningful new housing construction. Consequently, the Housing Partnership Board encourages the Planning Board to continue to refine, over time, this proposed multifamily overlay zoning, addressing opportunities and issues as they arise. In summary, it is essential that, as a community, we provide both more and a broader range of housing options if Winchester is going to continue to be economically viable and competitive within the Boston area. Refinement of this MBTA overlay district, as well as updating the housing production plan and the new economic development study that is being undertaken, represent important opportunities to address this need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To the Housing Partnership Board. All right. I believe at this time, there's no other boards or committees' recommendations for Article 4?
Affordable Housing Trust.
All right, the Affordable Housing Trust, if you could please make your way to the microphone to give a recommendation to the body on Article 4. On their behalf, Mrs. Stacy Arizari.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Affordable Housing Trust voted unanimously to support Article 4. In line with our mission, while we would have been pleased to see additional affordable housing options detailed in the zoning plan, passage of the article in order to be in compliance with the state was of a greater concern for us. While this is a zoning overlay that may not result in actual housing development now or in the future, it increases the path to more diverse housing options in town. So we supported the article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, seeing no other boards or committee members who have recommendations that they voted to provide this body, members of Town Meeting, you may make your way to the microphone stands. When you get there, we will go back and forth. Please state your legal name, how you would like to be identified, and the precinct that you represent, along with your address for the record of the meeting.
Hi, Josh Bears, Precinct 7, 6 Copley Street. And just wanted to say thank you to the Z-Rack and the town planner for putting this together in pretty quick fashion. It sounds like the state came up with this not that long ago, and they're asking us to comply very quickly. I just had a few questions through you, Madam Moderator, to the town planner. Was there, because I agree with the Housing Partnership Board on the lack of the central business district, seems like an oversight, and specifically 10 Converse Place, which is already a high-rise practically for Winchester, would be an ideal candidate for this type of multifamily housing, and without the need to really put a new eyesore in place. And so just wondering, was 10 Converse Place considered, given that you can exclude certain building fronts on like Mount Vernon? Seems like it would be an easy add. Just wondering why it wasn't.
To the town planner, could you please provide Town Meeting additional information on why 10 Converse was not considered as part?
So 10 Converse, as well as a lot of other areas in our more central downtown core, was ultimately excluded from the area. We've gone through several revisions. I'd say at least four, but it could be up to 10, including various amounts of our downtown core. A few things came out based off of several public information sessions that we had, which were priorities to the community. One was retaining that downtown commercial and that ground floor commercial. And the only way that we could guarantee that that would happen is by not allowing by-right residential development. That's one. The other is preserving the historic character of the areas, so making sure that a development couldn't replace or build on top of any of the existing historic or historically, or the good character of the neighborhood. And the third is what is referred to as spot zoning. So although we would have loved to be able to include some individual parcels, we wouldn't be able to do that unless we had an entire five-acre district to do that. So we're very restricted in being able to just pick individual parcels. We did actually try doing that at one point. We asked the state, they said can't do that. So hopefully that answers this question.
Thank you.
Okay. One other question, and this one goes through the moderator to the FinCom Chair. In your deliberations where you recommend a vote against this, did you consider the risk of high litigation costs to the town should the Milton lawsuit fail, and we don't have zoning in place by December 31st?
Thank you. To the FinCom Chair, did you, as a body, review the cost of litigation or any cost associated if the Milton case shall fail?
Well, what we understood, I think, when we debated this, and it was almost evenly divided, so, I mean, there is no uniform position within FinCom on the question you asked. But our understanding was that the zoning had to be in place by the end of 2024. So I think it's fair to say that there may be more time than people might have expected.
For clarification for the body, what is the date that the zoning has to be in place according to the laws at this time, the last day of the year? Thank you very much. Further on the question, I believe you got to the mic first in line.
Good evening. Bill McGonigal, Precinct 3, 26 Winslow Road. Through the moderator to Town Council, we've heard a couple of references now to the Milton appeal before the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court. My question is, what can we expect to be the scope of any potential ruling from the SJC, and when might we expect to see it? If we have a deadline, and if we need to know what the impact of that ruling might be, I think that is important for our deliberation.
Thank you. To Town Council, can you provide Town Meeting more clarity on the Milton appeal and the scope of that ruling that is anticipated to come in, and when?
Thank you for the question. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jay Tallerman, Town Council. It is always difficult to predict either the pace or the result of litigation. I think, given the normal flow of high-stake appeal before the Supreme Judicial Court, I think we could expect something as early as the winter and as late as mid-2025. No, there's a lot of complex issues there. As to expectations, my expectation, as someone who looks at this kind of stuff daily and is advising a number of communities on MBTA zoning, I think it is almost impossible to foresee that the Supreme Judicial Court will strike down this statute. I do not think that they will strike down the mandate either. I think the issue at stake in that case is whether or not they can compel a town to actually pass something. My opinion is generally no, they can't, because it's a legislative assembly, but it's an interesting legal issue that probably only municipal lawyers really get excited about. The other issue that I think is front and center in that is that what would be the remedy for the state, so to speak, or the penalty to the town that doesn't choose to do this? And it is clear that it would be by just a simple read of the statute, that certain grant funds would be lost. However, we are also hearing that other grant funds not listed could be in jeopardy because the scoring system for those grants might take into consideration whether or not a town has complied. So there are significant risks out there for towns that don't comply, that go well beyond just fighting the state mandate, the unfunded mandate, so to speak, that the state has thrust upon us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, Dorothy Symboli, 17 Bigelow Avenue, Precinct 6. Through you to, well, I have several questions and then one comment. Is that okay?
Why don't we take each question, one by one?
Okay. So my first question is, I guess, through you to Town Council or the planner, why is Planning Board and not the Zoning Board of Appeals the review authority under this Second question is, what was Z-Rack's position on the inclusion of design review guidelines? You know, at this point, the design review guidelines are going to be put together by the Planning Board. They're not included in this article. Usually, we would see those design review guidelines come in front of this Town Meeting, and this Town Meeting would have the opportunity to approve those. And I'd like to know what Z-Rack's position was on that. I'm wondering if anyone contemplated going back to our old zoning with regard to Main Street to include the interior parcels to accommodate parking and more commercial businesses, and enable more commercial businesses. This is, I think, somebody will have to remind me what year. We took those interior parcels on Main Street, and we took them out of the mixed-use residential building. And then, what do they have contemplated for the increased density in terms of deliveries and parking? You know, now that people are working from home, the statute was passed prior to everyone working from home, or it was actually started prior to everyone working from home in the pandemic. So now with increased deliveries, Uber Eats, Instacart, like, what is North Main Street going to look like with that? If we want to change this law in the future, as our town planner mentioned, will the state then need to approve those changes? Do we have to have the blessing from the state to do that? And then lastly, for Town Council, in, I don't know which part of this this is, I'm sorry, in Section 11 for historically significant structures, how enforceable is the provision? Plans that include demolition of historic structures are strongly discouraged. What does that get us? Where are the teeth in that statement? And then, can I make my general statement, or do you want to answer the questions first?
You can make your statement now, and then we'll move on.
Okay. I feel very strongly that we should postpone this vote until the fall, reason being, I do think we should look to see what happens with these various lawsuits. There's other towns that are also rejecting 3A. There was actually a federal lawsuit filed today. I believe a group of residents from Rockport, they have one filed with the state, they have one now filed with the feds. Inherently, the statute is really difficult, because it frustrates the town's efforts to meet the threshold of 10% as set forth in Article 40B. So the only buildings that where we can mandate affordable housing is where a building is 11 units to 24 units. Anything larger than 24, they do not need to have affordable housing. Anything 10 or under, they do not need to have affordable housing, meaning we could have 10 projects of 10 units each producing 100 units, and not one of those units will be an affordable unit. And I really think that we should kind of use this time to think through, look at some of these other issues, and see what the state says. I mean, maybe the state will now allow us to include more provisions with regard to affordable units. I mean, it's frustrating, this statute itself, the implementation of it, is frustrating our compliance, or us meeting that 40B threshold. And you have two state laws, and they're contradictory to each other in terms of how we're, as a town, supposed to perform.
Thank you. To the Planning Board, can you please provide information on why the Planning Board was decided as a review authority for this versus the ZBA, just the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Thank you. So that was a choice by the Planning Board, and a choice that we made in cooperation with Z-Rack, with our consultants, and with Town Council. Since the Planning Board is bringing this to, you know, they were essentially the architects of this, the Planning Board felt that they were the best to be the committee to review and approve in the site plan process.
Thank you. Next question. The design review guidelines, they actually are not the authority of this body, correct, Council?
As drafted.
As drafted, are not in the authority of this body. But the question that is appropriate is the Z-Rack's position on design review guidelines. Do they take one?
So, design review guidelines is an ongoing process that we will be working with Z-Rack with immediately. It's something that we will continue to work with Z-Rack, and many other members of the community will be holding public information sessions and meetings about the progress of those guidelines. The reason you don't see them today is that they are not necessary for our compliance.
Thank you. Next question. On Main Street, did you take into consideration parking and commercial along with deliveries?
Yes. Site circulation is a part of the design review process, and the site plan review process, excuse me, that has been taken into consideration.
Thank you. And the next question, does a state need to approve changes as they commence thereafter?
Yes.
I believe that essentially wraps up the questions. Further on the question, Mrs. Welch?
Thank you. Good evening, Town Meeting. I'm Jackie Welch from Precinct 5, former Planning Board Chair, former select person. I wanted to, first of all, thank the Planning Board so much for taking this on. Traditionally, in response to the last comment, it traditionally is the body that presents zoning articles to Town Meeting. I'm not saying it has to all the time, but that is customary. But I also wanted to thank our town planner, because he is taking on kind of a really big topic for, you know, being relatively newer to town in the past year, and we welcome him, and I think he did a fantastic job on the presentation. I also wanted to thank Town Council for his analysis of the Milton case. And just so you all are aware, the Milton case involves the Attorney General's Office actually suing the town of Milton. So it's not the other way around. And this is kind of extraordinary, actually, to that procedural posture, but I actually do agree with Town Council on the likelihood, you know, if I was going to guess, that the SJC probably will uphold the statute. I think the issue in that case is also a little different than ours, and it includes, I think there is an argument about whether or not their location with the MBTA is significant enough to warrant this mandate to Milton. In our instance, I would sort of just sort of say that we've got the commuter rail station right in the center of our town. So I guess my point being that even if the SJC ruled against the Attorney General's Office and for the town of Milton, that might not actually apply in our case. So I just kind of throw- So I just kind of throw that out as well. Couple other really quick things I wanted to just kind of mention. So I understand the urgency here. I also understand the deadline, that we do have another town meeting in the fall. So I also want Town Meeting to be aware, as I think the blue sheets are really informative if you take the time to look through them. So as you'll see, the height allowed will be higher, but that's part of what's this calculation that is being imposed on this, by the statute onto our town. The parking, you'll see, it's .75 per unit, but I think the notion there is that because the development will be near, obviously, a commuter rail, the theory is that not everybody will have a car, I suppose, but there may be some issues there that the town will have to deal with long range with respect to parking. The design review guidelines, it's great to know that that can still kind of happen, and that's not unusual for the Planning Board to develop their own regulations or guidelines through their meetings, and they've got some fantastic precedent for that, including the Center of Business District Design Guidelines. I just note, one of my other concerns, it's sort of a carryover from what Ms. Symboli just said, and then I'll be finished. If you look at the blue sheets on affordable housing, you'll see this whole 10% and then 5% middle housing that Ms. Symboli mentioned, which I believe could mean, if this isn't like a 40B requirement, that there will be more market units. So there's always an up and downside for a town like ours when we're, as Ms. Leighton very eloquently stated in her presentation on behalf of the Planning Board, that we're out of safe harbor now. So it's, all these things are calculations for us, because the more market housing, market rate housing, it means the more we're behind on our affordable housing mandate. So I just make that observation. I think it's sort of interesting. If anyone wants to comment on that, I'm not, I don't need them to, but if they want to take that opportunity to explain that to Town Meeting, it's probably a good idea. I can see our body passing this now, because then we have this over with. On the other hand, I can also see the idea of waiting, because we do a fall town meeting. But I personally don't necessarily think that the town of Milton's case is going to, as our Town Council was saying, will sort of obviate our mandate, but in any event, thank you very much.
Thank you. Further on the question, Senator Lewis.
Thank you. My name is Jason Lewis. I'm a Precinct 3 Town Meeting member. I also have the privilege of serving as one of two Winchester State Senators. And so in that role, I actually had the opportunity to vote for this new law. Interestingly, it was actually only one paragraph that was part of a much larger, it wasn't even a housing or zoning bill, it was an economic development bill, I believe it was back in 2020, and that's how it was approved. What I wanted to share with you, as some of you know me, many of you don't, but I have served as a state representative before, and then as state senator, and I've often told people that probably the most difficult issues that I have to consider and vote on in the legislature are issues and bills that deal with zoning and housing, for the same reasons that, you know, we struggle with them in Town Meeting, and that these issues are often very contentious, because they impact the character of our community, the quality of life, traffic, you know, school enrollment, density, all kinds of issues, right, that we all feel very strongly about. So in the past, you know, I really did struggle with these kinds of issues when they came before the legislature, but in recent years, I've really changed my thinking a lot, and I'm willing to admit, it's evolved a lot on these issues. And I strongly supported this when it came before the legislature. I've also supported other changes that the state legislature has passed. For example, we changed the threshold from a 2/3 vote to a majority vote for certain zoning articles. That's impacted this Town Meeting. And we've done a number of other things as well. And the reason that I've evolved on this, and I'm not the only one, I think many of my colleagues in the state legislature have, is because we're facing such a significant housing affordability crisis across, actually, all of Massachusetts, but it's particularly acute in the greater Boston region. And I think all of you are generally aware of this. But what you may not be aware of is that we are actually seeing, starting to see, an exodus of young people and working-age people from the state, and especially from the greater Boston area. We all, you know, admire and appreciate that we have such a wonderful educational system. We have some of the best public and private colleges and universities. Young people flock here. We want them to be able to stay here. We want them to be able to fill the jobs that are created, you know, in the greater Boston area. We want them to build their lives here. And too many of them nowadays are saying, we want to stay here, the jobs are here, we can have a great career, but we cannot afford to live here. Cannot afford to pay the rent, they cannot afford to purchase a home. This is becoming a really existential crisis for this region. And it's not only young people in working age. Of course, it also impacts our seniors. It very much impacts, you know, middle-income folks, teachers, nurses, firefighters, plumbers. I mean, it just are being priced out. And there's no simple solution to this problem, of course. It's very complex. It's been built up over decades. But certainly, a significant part of the solution is we have to increase our housing stock. It's estimated that we need 200,000 more housing units to be built over the next five to 10 years to catch up. And if you look at what we used to do in terms of building in the 1960s and 70s into the 1980s, we used to build a lot more in Massachusetts than in more recent decades, and that's why we've fallen behind. So that's why this was adopted. This was signed by a Republican governor. Governor Baker strongly supported this. This has been a bipartisan issue now on Beacon Hill. Our current governor, Maura Healey, as you probably know, this is like the main issue she campaigned on. She is, she and her administration are absolutely committed to implementing and enforcing this law, and continuing to seek other ways to encourage and develop our housing stock. We're considering a multi-billion-dollar housing bond bill in the legislature right now, which would also invest more money in housing development programs. The Attorney General, Andrea Campbell, is also very committed to enforcing this law, which is why she sued the town of Milton. Milton is actually one of only, I believe, two communities that has not moved forward at this point to come into compliance with this law. Dozens and dozens and dozens of other communities have moved forward. I represent six communities. I think all of the other communities I represent, you know, are, have already approved zoning or are in the process of doing so.
Senator Lewis, I hate to interrupt you, but you have reached your maximum time.
All right. I will stop there, but I did want to just share that with you all this evening, and I hope you will support this article tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Further, I believe you've already spoken on this article. If you can allow the Town Meeting members who have not spoken yet the opportunity, this is Ann Sarah.
Ann Sarah, Precinct 1, 5 Andrews Circle. I just wanted to point out first, a point of privilege, that it's freezing, and I had to go home and get a second outfit on.
Can we get the temperature turned up in the auditorium?
If somebody could help that. But secondly, I'm not sure that I heard from our Town Council, but the Milton, oral arguments have been scheduled for Milton in October. There is zero possibility that that lawsuit will be, that will be far long enough to help us in our deliberation if we were to postpone this to fall. And the Attorney General has pledged to go after more communities than just Milton, and that scares me. And I see a lot wrong with this, with 3A in general, from the state's point of view. I think it should include the opportunity to put some ground floor commercial in. I see problems with our law as it's been written. For example, I think it presents us with a spaghetti mishmash of possible overlay districts, so that one property can be in multiple overlay districts. And I think that a developer will come in and say, I'm going to do a cafeteria-style choice of what kind of thing I want to pick out of multiple overlay districts, because we don't seem to have language, specific language, in our overlay districts that says, you can only apply one. So that's something I'd like to see changed. And there are other changes that I'd like to see. I think we have time to do the changes, but I think that we need to pass this tonight to be sure that we're covered. And that's the message that I'd like to get across to Town Meeting. Also, I've looked in some of these other lawsuits, for example, Marshfield, which was filed, I think, today or two days ago, something like that. It's totally different than us. It really doesn't apply to our situation. So I think we need to figure this out for ourselves. I say we pass it and then go along fixing it little by little, whatever we see needs to be fixed. And we clean up our zoning bylaws in general.
Thank you so much. Further on the question, Mr. Gerius.
Hi, Deobgerius, Precinct 8. I also have to be on the Planning Board, but I'm speaking for them at the moment. I want to clarify a couple of statements that were made about the inclusionary housing. So there is no cap on the size of a project in terms of how much inclusionary housing. So for instance, we have in our bylaw 10%, and that applies to any size housing. It isn't capped at 24 units. We've also put in an extra 5% for units, for projects more than 25 units. We originally had wanted to use the existing inclusionary zoning bylaw language, but the state is, uses a different measure of how you measure the percentage of units. We are going to try to, and if you don't go by their percentage, you have to file an economic feasibility analysis, which we have done so in order to get our extra 5%. And we're going to pursue that, or, I can't speak for the Planning Board, I said I wouldn't. The other thing I want to say is that there's a lot of talk about the deadline and why, you know, can't we push this off until the fall? You've heard some pretty good arguments about not knowing when the SJC will make a ruling. The other side is that the state has said it will take approximately 90 days to review bylaws, and a lot of them are coming in at this time of year, so I'm going to take them at their word. So if we don't pass it now, and we come back in the fall, that's going to be early November, which means that the state has said they probably won't get through their review until next year, which is after the compliance deadline. So it's safe, it's safer to pass it now, and we always have the opportunity to revisit it and to tweak it if necessary. It's better to be safe now and make the changes as we go along. I know this body does not always like to hear a lot of zoning things coming from the Planning Board, but I think this, you know, we can come back, hopefully only one more time, and make the changes necessary. But I would urge this body to approve this. It is what it is in terms of our dealings with the state, but the safest and best path forward for this town, I think, is to pass it at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Hawley.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. I am on the Council on Aging Advisory Board, and for those of you who have not read the writing which is up available for you on the table, I just wanted to confirm that the Council on Aging voted unanimously in support of this article. We urge Town Meeting to advance it. One of the issues that we wrestle with most often, and it's most difficult to address, is economic insecurity among Winchester's older residents. It may or may not be obvious to many of us, but it is something which, in fact, shapes their lives and decisions. And one of the biggest issues with regards to that is the availability of different housing options, and particular lower-cost housing options. And while this is not a cure for that, this is another step in the right direction, in the opinion of the Council on Aging, and we would urge Town Meeting to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Further on the question, Mr. Leo.
Hi, Susan DeLeo, Precinct 5. A couple of questions for Town Council, through you, Madam Moderator, to Town Council. There have been several references to various lawsuits from, by towns or from the state. If you could just clarify how many lawsuits there are currently on this issue, what towns they are, in very, very brief posture? And my second question is, in Section 11 on historical structures, there's some language that's not particularly clear. Plans that include demolition of historic structures are strongly discouraged. Could you, Town Council, please, opine as to the enforceability of that language?
Did you have any straight-up comments or just the questions?
Just questions.
Okay. Thank you. Town Council, could you please provide direction? I have two questions. I'll ask you one, and then have you answer it, and then I'll ask you the second one. The first question, Town Council, could you please provide Town Meeting information on how many lawsuits there currently are regarding this issue, and what the merits of those lawsuits are?
So aside from the case where the state has sued Milton, I don't have, although I'm hearing that Marshfield may offensively sue the state, I'm not aware of a filed piece of litigation. I'm aware of a lot of threats and a lot of letters from towns seeking relief and otherwise, but I, none of the towns that we represent, and I'm not aware, and I haven't seen any litigation filed by a town. It would not surprise me to see that happen. But again, our opinion generally as Town Council has been that there's nothing illegal about the statute. There may be some missteps by the Attorney General, in our view, on how far they can push a community to compel performance and compliance with this, but there hasn't been a lot of litigation yet. I think we can expect to see some.
Can I clarify, can I just ask through you, Madam Moderator, I guess what's going on in Rockport? It's my understanding that there is either a citizen's position or some kind of action taken.
I think, as Town Council has said, they're unaware of any filings at this time in court cases. So if there is citizen action, he said he was not aware. Is that correct, Town Council?
That is correct. I've heard that there's some, certainly some discontent in Rockport over this, but I'm not aware of any legal filings.
The second question to Town Council, could you please provide Town Meeting information on the historical structures demolition and the enforcement of that?
Right. So this was something that was discussed at length, and we helped the Planning Board with this, in that this is by right. We can only take certain things so far. We did, as we are able to, or the Planning Board did, as they are able to, to provide at least a secondary level of review for historical structures. And even though that language is not particularly mandatory and is more in the line of strongly encouraging, it's important to note that every single project that may affect a historical structure at the zoning level will go through site plan review. And while site plan review is not a means by which to deny a project, it is a means by which you can shape a project. Secondarily, as has been discussed already, there are design review guidelines, the six or seven categories of design review guidelines that are coming under this bylaw will have, likely have further information and requirements for those filings. And lastly, the bylaw itself, even though it didn't have to do this, indicates that there are other protections in the town's bylaws for historical structures, which are not subject to the state's mandates under this particular zoning statute. So things like demolition delay and other protections that may be afforded to historical structures remain intact, and that's specifically called out for in this bylaw.
Thank you so much for that information, Town Council. Further on the question, I believe we have three more speakers, and then we'll call the vote.
Morris Sullivan from Precinct 1. Just wanted to make the point, excuse me, to Town Meeting, that this new overlay zoning looks a lot like our existing zoning. We're really lucky that in Winchester, we've already zoned for dense housing, especially in the north core of the CBD, already has the largest PUD, so we can do already dense housing under the existing. So this overlay is going to look a lot like that. There's nothing scary about this. It's, the only real difference is it's residential by right, which is why I personally didn't want to push it further into the CBD, because then an owner could build housing by right, and we would destroy our commercial, you know, base in town. So I'm glad that the Planning Board pushed it out of the CBD, which was already a complex zoning done carefully maybe six years ago. So the ZERAC also took that into account. Leave the CBD zoning alone. It's going to, you know, spur development, mixed-use housing, and let's push the 3A up along North Main Street, which we were going to do. going to do anyway. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I urge favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Further on the question, I believe you are up, because you have not spoken yet.
Sorry, I thought you were going to give the other side a turn. I guess I have three fundamental questions. So I'm not sure to whom to address them, Madam Moderator. I'll let you sort that out.
I'll help you.
Great. So the first one has to do with the state funds, and our planner put up a slide that said we were jeopardizing critical and essential funds. Since they're critical and essential, I would love to know, what are those funds, I guess, is the first question? What amount of funding are we looking at? Has there been a commitment or a suggestion of a certain amount of funds that would be available to us? So that's the first question. The second one is, I heard Senator Lewis talk very passionately about the need for more affordable housing, particularly for younger people and citizens, yet I note in the documentation for the bylaw, it's, it's mentioned several times that this is not about affordable housing. This is about increased density in town. So I guess I question if the driving forces need for affordability, why is no mention of affordable units in this, and no requirement for that? And the third one, which I, I'm not sure there's an easy answer to this one, but I think by waiting until the fall, were we not to vote for this tonight and wait and vote for it at the fall meeting, that would allow us some time to potentially address this question. With 1,220 units coming into town, what is the impact of that on, excuse me, I'm getting a cold tom horse. What is the impact on our infrastructure in town, in our public services, on our schools? Has any of that been researched? Has there been any quantification of that? Just add a quick note, and I will mention that in this year's numbers coming from the Department of Education, the amount of money that we spend per student is actually closer to $20,000. It's $19,000, and almost $20,000 in the state averages honor about $20,000. So if only 500 students out of those 1,220 units matriculate in the schools, that's 20,000 times 500 students, that's $10 million that we're going to have to absorb in, in our funds in the town. So my question fundamentally is, has anyone looked at any of these issues, attempted to document them, I'm sorry, to quantify them, document them, and scope them out? Thank you.
Thank you. There are three questions that are being asked. The first question I would like to ask, I'm not exactly sure who the right entity would be to answer the question regarding state funds. What funding are we talking about is at risk with granting and the amounts anticipated with that? I believe the town manager has that information, and so I will ask that question to the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I did a little research prior to coming here this evening, anticipating this would be a question. Information that's available on the state website states that communities that fail to comply with the MBTA Communities Act will automatically lose certain state funding, including funding for local infrastructure through the MassWorks grants. Also, communities would be, would not be eligible for housing choice grants. So those are automatic disqualifications. In addition, the Healey administration has notified communities that compliance with the MBTA zoning act will, will be required when dispensing certain discretionary local aid, and they list, they provide a list of 13 grants. They currently have included in that, many of those are grants the town commonly applies for and have received funds for over, over time.
Thank you very much. Second question, regarding affordable housing, I believe town meeting could use some support on understanding the different levels of affordable housing, and what components of, what types of affordable housing are part of this and not part of this?
So the state does not allow us to use more than 10% affordable housing. We have fulfilled that, and we've actually gone an extra step in for buildings that are over 25 units, no cap. All buildings over 25 units are qualified for that 10% affordable housing plus an additional 5%. Buildings, buildings under 25 units remain at that 10% affordable.
Can you please clarify, when you say affordable, what is defined as affordable housing for that 10%?
So the affordable housing is, the 10% is at 80% AMI, and the additional 5% is at 120% AMI. Both would help us with our subsidized housing inventory.
Thank you very much for that. Further, we have a third question regarding the 1,220 units. Can you please clarify the amount of units anticipated, and the work that the planning board has done around the impact of those units to our resources?
So although the state is mandating us to zone for 1,220 units, we do not expect 1,220 units. We currently have 750, and it is our estimate based off of using estimates in surrounding towns, that we can expect between 200 to 300 additional units within the next 10 to 15 years. Can you ask the, the second part of that question again?
The work that you did around the impact of those units, potential, the research and studies that you did regarding the impact of those additional units on our resources.
There will be impacts. I mean, any, any amount of new, of, of new units increases stormwater, increases sewer, increases amount of students to our, to our schools. That, that is something that, that is going to happen. But again, we do not foresee even a majority, or even half of these, these units being, being filled. And based off of the recent projects, which have also been approved in Winchester, such as Fells Hardware and Waterfield, which have about 50% of those being either studios or single-bedroom apartments, we expected that to be the same for, for these additional units. So again, we, we mentioned that 200 to 300 possible units at the, at what we estimate the, the max being, with half of those being studios or single, or single bedrooms.
Thank you very much. Those are the three questions. I told town meeting we'd hear from one more person before we vote. If you have new information or a question that was not answered, please, I will hear you, but not yet.
Okay.
Oh, okay. But if you have new information or a question that has not been asked, please do. Please do not repeat at this time any comments that have already been made.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Marilyn Gagelas, Precinct 1. I'm a member of the Z-RAC Committee, and I just wanted to commend the work of the town planners, the planning board and the town planner. The Z-RAC Committee has worked and, and tended with them, and it's been yeoman's job doing this work. I really appreciate all the support from all the boards in town that truly understand how necessary this is for Winchester, and that it's really not a bad thing. And I'm hoping that town meeting will consider voting yes on this. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Court, did you have additional information or a question?
I do, and I'm going to leave it to your discretion, Madam Moderator, if you feel that the question is relevant to be answered. I want to try and clarify something that was brought up about the cost of increased student enrollment. It's not a simple thing. Per pupil expenditure is an aggregate number that is an average of what we spend. It's not like a tuition. So it's more like a step function. If we don't have to add teachers or administrators, we're not increasing the budget by $20,000. It's much more complicated. So through the moderator to the superintendent, if he could give some information about enrollment and the impact, and it's, it's complex, because you have students who are special education, you have students coming in, you're not increasing all resources at the same rate for those students. If the superintendent could please clarify that, so that people are a little bit more clear about how additional students add to our budget. And I'll leave it to your discretion, Madam Moderator, as to whether or not that is pertinent.
I think it has merit to the.
I believe Dr. Hackman has left the building.
I know. I recognize that. So I was going to turn it over to the school committee. To the school committee, is there someone from the school committee that can provide town meeting information on how the complications of school enrollment due to development, and how that impacts the expenditures?
I don't know if the school committee is prepared to answer that question, but I would like to ask that, if it's addressed more than.
All right. So why don't we do this? I think it is correct. It is more complex, would you say? And with that, I do think it is beneficial for this body to understand that, and I would ask that at the next meeting of the First Order of Business, that we hear from the school committee regarding that. Yes?
To the town planner, the point of information has been requested to confirm, is it 200 units that is anticipated new at this time? 200 units. All right. He is shaking his head yes, and he is telling the moderator that's 200 new units. Did you have a point of information? Because we are moving the vote.
No, I had a question.
What is your question?
It's a little late, and I apologize. Susan Ardone, Precinct 3. Getting back to, if we do pass this tonight, and say we were to modify it or reverse it, does it require special state approval, and could they deny our changes?
Does any changes to the bylaw, to town council, can you please provide town meeting information on if we change our bylaw of this overlay district, does it require special approval?
So the, these bylaws, they, they go through a secondary review through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities with the former DHCD. So a change to it would also require that same review. In other respects, they go through the same Attorney General review. The, the distinction, the, the unique element of this is that you could be out of, it could still be a legitimate zoning bylaw, but be out of compliance with 3A. So a change could get passed that takes us out of compliance with what the state is required, but it would still be legal. It just would mean that we are out of compliance, per se. So it can be kind of two things at once. But yes, the core, the answer to your core question is that if we change this, it's going to go through the, the same review in reverse. If we change it in a way to take us out of compliance with some of the required, in terms of number of units and amount of area, and some of the other things, or the levels of review, then we'll hear from them on that, and we would be out of compliance and potentially risk some of the penalties in terms of loss of grant funds, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, it's essentially what we're doing. If you vote, and you vote no, it's being deferred, out. So at this time, I'm going to call it out of order, and also, you can't defer to another town meeting. So this time, we're going to call the vote. If you could please get your clickers out. All right, for our newest town meeting members, this is an adventure that we always do. So at this time, if you vote in the affirmative for Article 4, you are voting to add the Article 4 motion language, the blue booklet, into our code of bylaws. If you vote no, you are not adding it to our zoning bylaws. The majority vote is required for this. The reason, it is not a two-thirds vote, for those who are historically aware that most zoning is two-thirds, is there a state legislation that for articles that revolve, involve housing, only requires a simple majority? The light is on. Green is in the affirmative. You are in favor of adding it to our zoning bylaws. Red is in the negative, and you are not in favor of adding it to our zoning bylaws.
Please check your votes, and if you have any concerns, the town clerk, the meeting clerk is in the back, who can support you. Seeing no one rise, there are 129 in the affirmative and 31 in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Town meeting members, as a reminder, the planning board is available. If you have concerns that they were voiced and want to, please reach out to them. This is not, as I said, town meeting is not a zero-sum game. At this time, we're going to conclude our business for today, and we will reconvene next Thursday. Do we have a motion to adjourn to next Thursday? All those in favor, thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening. See you next Thursday.
All right, good evening once again, everyone. I'm Alan Idon, and you have just been watching the first session of Winchester's Spring 2024 Town Meeting. So let's do a recap of what we have gone through this evening. We are also noticing that our town meetings are starting earlier and finishing earlier. I've seen many town meetings go after 11:00. It is just after 10:00 now. We open by remembering John Dooley, former firefighter here in town, and very well-known member of the town who passed away a couple of weeks ago. In a moment of silence for Mr. Dooley. Preliminary motions were passed, which allow things, including cable television coverage. And then we went on to Article 1, which is report of town boards, starting with a select board. We heard from Michelle Pryor, the chair, talked about the use of the ARPA funds, the capital needs of the town, support for the select board articles, and the volunteer opportunities in the town. Town manager Beth Rudolph mentioned that the Lynch School is Town manager Beth Rudolph mentioned that the Lynch School is on track for occupancy in September 2025. The Waterfield project downtown, next to the train station, is moving forward. She said the town has $19.3 million in free cash, and has a AAA bond rating, which only 14 other communities in Massachusetts have that rating. She also showed some graphs of historical use of funds. Tom Hopcraft from the school committee said that the Lynch School is a sustainable model for a net-zero energy building. The school committee is now focusing on Morocco School as the next project. Talked about education objectives and procedures, says that the town invests almost $18,000 per student, among the lowest, he said, in peer communities. And we have high-performing students, and he highlighted some of the system savings that the school committee has worked on. From the Board of Health, we, the Board of Health hired an environmental health inspector, talked about road and control, new restaurant plan reviews, hazardous waste collection, and works with the Coalition for a Safer Community. We're from the Chair of the Library Trustees, thanked the support of the community, said that their library had 168,000 visitors last year, and commented on the, the items that are available for loan at the library. She says, before you go to a website to find out what's free, check and see what's available to borrow from your public library. In 2023, the building was rewired for Wi-Fi, and the next project is for security cameras to be updated. From the FinCom, we heard the chair say that the budget is balanced without use of reserves. The need, need for override is not projected in the near future. Morocco will be a 20, fiscal year 30, 2030 debt exclusion article to get that school project underway. And said the Town Meeting should consider the effect on property taxes of the Community Preservation Act, which is coming up later in this town meeting, and stabilization funds needed for capital and building stabilization funds, and it's important to fund them to keep the operating costs down. From the EFPBC, the Education Facilities Planning and Building Committee, Chris Nixon, said that the, the issues here at the high school were concrete deterioration because of the structure that was actually original to the 1970 construction, and it was not rebuilt in the most recent one. But the deterioration of the concrete was not beyond the initial findings, and they are confident those problems can be fairly readily mitigated. The gym floor is over 20 years old, and it was also not renovated. That's also scheduled for replacement, there's an article on that later on in Town Meeting. Again, Morocco School is next to be replaced on the master plan, but he did say the growth in enrollment in the school department, student population has slowed, and they are carefully studying trends to try and figure out what size school would need to be replaced in, what size the new Morocco School would have to be. He said the Mass School Building Administration looks favorably on the town's plans. They also said there's rapid progress on the Lynch construction due to the mild weather, and that project came in $2 million under budget, which allowed for changes to make it a net-zero energy structure. Colin Simpson from the Government Regulations reported, they said that committee reports on all articles that affect codes and bylaws here in the town, and will present a review of them to Spring 2025 Town Meeting. Report from the Climate Action Committee, who advises the select board to reach climate action goals, said there's a roadmap on the website of their goals and their progress. The goal is to reduce carbon emissions in the town by 80% by 2050, which coincides with the state's goals. He also commented on Wind Power 100, the electricity purchase, cooperative purchase program, says that Wind Power 100 is 100% renewable energy, and if you go to that program, it'll cost you about one cent per kilowatt hour additional. And he said over 400 homes already use Wind Power 100. You can sign up for it on the town's website. And also, there's a stretch energy code for, for new construction in town to be all electric. So after the recess, we got into Article Three, which was the report of the planning board. We heard from Carrie Layton, the new town planner, excuse me, Taylor Herman, the new town planner, and also, they said that they, we have a new Northeastern University co-op student also assisting in the planning office. They reviewed the ongoing plans, 56 units, including 56 units at the Waterfield site, said it's a very sustainable building, and they hope to break ground on that next spring. The town does need a new housing plan. We have 10%, we need to reach 10% affordable housing, and to do that, we need to add 40 affordable units per year to get the town back in what's called safe harbor, which can resist undesirable housing projects. When you're not in safe harbor, the city's overridden. The master plan has a vision of the town, looking forward to 2030. They also felt that the North Main Street development should keep the look of the center business district. But the work was, work was needed on the underlying zoning in the town. They will study, they will be studying the light industrial area around Holton Street, and they're looking for input from residents, especially residents who abut some of these zoning, areas where zoning is being changed. And he said you could sign up, she said you could sign up for the planning board newsletter. And then we moved on to Article Four, which probably is making a lot of headlines around the state. This is for the MBTA Overlay District that was created in 2021, that requires towns to set certain levels of housing zoning available within area surrounding train stations, and for, for towns that are served by the MBTA, as we of course are. It's referred to as MOD, which is MBDA Overlay District. MOD One is Main Street from the Rotary to Skillings. MOD Two is Lake Street. MOD Three is, one side of Lake Street, rather, MOD Three is Main Street from Skillings to Swanton, and MOD Four is east of MOD Three, so basically in the Parkview apartment area. MBT3A is the, is the law, and it says, communities served by the MBTA must have zoning that allows three or more units per building by right. Now, in Winchester, that could mean 1,200, 1,220 units within these four MOD districts. 710 of those must be located within a half mile of the train station. We certainly, we currently have about 750 of those 1,220. These plans will encourage ground level commercial and historic sensitivity on historic buildings. 15 units per acre zoning outside of the center business district. The select board is in favor. FinCom said they were unfavorable, unfavorable majority. They also, they said they, the majority wanted to wait for a Supreme Judicial Court ruling on, one of the towns, Milton, of course, has sued to overturn this, and they, they rejected the acceptance of their zoning. The Housing Partnership Board supports. Dorothy Symboli, a Town Meeting member, feels that this law will make it more difficult to create affordable housing. Senator Jason Lewis spoke as a Town Meeting member. He said zoning articles are among the most difficult at the legislature, but he strongly supported this measure, and is needed, he said it's needed to support affordable housing needs. Tom Howley said the Council on Aging strongly supports this article. Another Town Meeting member said that the center business zoning already accomplishes this and preserves the commercial base, and the MOD expands that commercial base, and feeling that the commercial, commercial base of this town needs to be supported. The planner expects actually only about 200 to 300 more units will come from this, this zoning, and he said that he expects about half of those will be studio or one-bedroom apartments, in response to some of the questions about the impact on schools and the town's infrastructure. Well, apparently it was a very convincing argument, because the vote, majority vote was required, and Article Four to create this new MBTA zoning overlay district was passed by 129 to 31. And that wraps up Town Meeting for tonight. This is Monday night. Next Town Meeting will be Thursday night, and we will be covering it here live at Winchester High School. So for all of us on the Wind Cam team here, I'm Ellen Idan. Have yourself a great night.